Okay, thank you all very much. I will call the board meeting back to order. And we are on to agenda item 4.02, which is presentation, discussion, and possible action to provide the board updated information on the Truckee Meadows COVID threat meter and to discuss possible thresholds and metrics that may be used to determine when to close and when to open schools due to COVID-19 and the impact to vulnerable populations. Our presenters today are Dr. Paul Lamarcas, our Chief Strategies Officer, Dr. Jeremy Smith, the Director of TMRPA, Dr. Eric Nielsen, Northern Nevada Emergency Physicians, and Dr. Ron Ariel, Ariel, a pediatrician here in town. And I know that this is a long awaited presentation. We appreciate your patience and sticking with us this evening. I think what probably will work best is if we let the doctors present and then save our questions for after we get through all of the slides at the end, and then we'll have plenty of time to ask them questions and hear if we have any public comment. So I will hand it over to you, Dr. Lamarcas.
President Raymond, Dr. McNeil, Superintendent McNeil, members of the Board of Trustees, thank you for the opportunity. For the record, Paul Lamarcas, Chief Strategies Officer. I am joined by these three experts who have dedicated a tremendous amount of time helping track COVID in the Truckee Meadows, and I think they should be applauded for that. Each of them, Dr. Nielsen, Dr. Smith, Dr. Ariel, they're members of the mayor's COVID response team. They've also been key members of a subcommittee that was responsible for developing the threat meter that we're going to hear about this evening. I do want to say thank you to Dr. Smith. I didn't know him three weeks ago, and I think we've been in contact every day since. He is a very good human being, very nice. He has shared everything that they've done. He's allowing us the opportunity to validate all of their findings, which is really critical if we possibly will use this as we go forward. I do believe Dr. Nielsen's going to start out kind of giving us a bit of a purpose statement around the meter. Dr. Smith will talk about kind of the logistics of the actual model and the meter, and then Dr. Ariel will talk about some of the guidelines that are meant to create some behavior change. Should you have questions regarding the metrics that you adopted on a preliminary basis, we can get to those at the end. We do have some displays if those become relevant. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Nielsen.
Thank you for the opportunity to present today, specifically President Raymond and Superintendent McNeil and all the trustees. My name is Eric Nielsen. I'm a local emergency doctor. I have three kids in the district, but more than anything, I'm a concerned citizen. I'm not a public health expert, and I don't work at the Health Department. I got asked to join the mayor's, we call it the working group, because she was trying to get her head around the COVID crisis about four months ago. Everybody was very scared and concerned, and she gathered a pretty amazing group of public leaders, private citizens, healthcare experts, hospital CEOs, people from the Health District to join, and try to get our head around as a community, and specifically Washoe County and Reno, how we can get through this together. I'd like to particularly thank my colleagues on the subcommittee that helped develop the threat meter. That's Dr. Ron Ariel down at the end, Jeremy Smith, Heather Kerwin from the Health District, Councilwoman Doer, and Jack Hester. He's out of town. He went back to Brown. He's pursuing his PhD. So the question tonight is, what is the risk meter? We came up with it because everybody was confused because there's so much data being thrown at us. We were looking at the Johns Hopkins Global Tracker, as well as our local Health Department dashboard. Our state has its own dashboard, and a lot of different varying types of data were getting thrown at us. And we came together with the main goal of trying to make a confusing and overwhelming situation a lot clearer and bring some simplicity to a murky situation. What we wanted to do is take a local look at the data and seek a way to inform our citizens how the pandemic is affecting our population. As Northern Nevadans, we can all understand the concept of a burn code, especially now. When you see the word extreme posted outside the fire department, you understand that it's probably not a good idea to spark up a backyard fire pit. We have the same questions and choices regarding COVID-19. Is it safe to go to an indoor restaurant? Is it safe to send my children to school? When can I feel comfortable gathering indoors with friends? And I think after this weekend, everybody's asking themselves if it was a good idea if they went to that barbecue yesterday or on Sunday. So we took into account various conditions and data, just like a burn code would. Is it windy outside? Is there a lot of tinder? Are thunderstorms or record heat wave in the forecast? In our risk meter, we identified five key metrics that we feel best reflect how threatened our community is by COVID-19 on any given day. Are a lot of people seeking COVID-19 testing? How many individuals are testing positive in the last couple of weeks? Is the percentage of positive tests getting dangerously high? And another thing we looked at that no other dashboard or meters looked at is the hospitalization and hospital capacity metrics, because even if people are getting sick with coronavirus, do they require medical attention or hospitalization? And perhaps one of our largest concerns was, can our hospitals handle a surge of the sickest COVID-19 patients? You'll notice we excluded certain data points such as deaths, because it's a lagging and terminal indicator. We want to look forward. That's why we included leading indicators such as exposed or symptomatic people seeking testing. We may include other metrics such as mask compliance in the future, but for now, we chose these five data points we feel best gauge our local COVID threat level. When we started this, we envisioned the risk meter as a tool mostly for community citizens. We hope they can rely upon it for up-to-date local data, and we wanted it to modify behavior. The idea was, if you went to the nightly news or went to the local newspaper and you saw it was yellow, and that was corroborated with local valid data, you would know that your risk for that day or week would be somewhat minimized. You could probably go do a couple more errands than you would usually do. If you look at the risk meter and it's red to purple, by that time, most likely government mandates would probably start restricting behavior, but it's a good way to guide individual decisions and on how much we gather, and obviously mask compliance, and all the other things we know about, like washing hands. We do have to say that this was never designed as an exclusive tool for the school district. If we had that in mind in its inception, we probably would have really tracked how many kids in the district are getting sick, how many teachers are getting sick. We designed this primarily to give, almost like a clearinghouse of all the data. All the data we retrieved and used is public knowledge. You can get it from the state website, the county, and the Nevada Hospital Association. But we're the first and only ones locally to bring it all together and look at the big picture and give our community an idea of how risky our county is in regards to the COVID fight. And so far, we've done relatively well, and our goal really in this committee is to give our citizens the best data so we can keep doing well and not turning into some of these terrible, you know, stories you hear, even in Clark County and other parts of the country where it just really fell apart. So that was our goal at the outset of this. And I guess we'll turn it over to Jeremy now, and he's going to take us through the nuts and bolts of the meter, what each metric means, and the color coding system. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nielsen. President Raymond, Vice President Taylor, trustees, and Superintendent McNeil, thank you so much for having us here tonight and this opportunity to describe the COVID risk meter. We had kind of a late-in-the-game name change, so it's called the COVID risk meter now. It's been a great endeavor to work with my colleagues on this meter and everyone else that is on the subcommittee that Dr. Nielsen mentioned, as well as the larger advisor team that the mayor put together. I would just add that I appreciate the discussion at the Regional Planning Governing Board meeting last week, which unanimously voted to support this work as part of TMRPA's work plan, and thank you to trustee Kitty Simon-Holland, who's our school board liaison for participating in that discussion and helping to facilitate that. Okay, so basically, as Dr. Nielsen pointed out, we've created this risk meter. It has five colors. On any given day, we're looking at publicly available data that we can get reliably daily, that's, you know, consistently, and also for Washoe County, to put that together using an algorithm to develop a daily score. Depending on the score, it will generate a certain color on the meter, ranging from green, which would be very good conditions, all the way to purple severe, which would be all of these things that Dr. Nielsen mentioned are really stacking up in a negative way. And we've added in tick marks in each color, specifically the yellow, orange, and red colors, so you can see kind of how we're performing within those and are we moving towards, you know, from high orange to a low red, or maybe going the other way. With each color, there's a set of guidelines, which Dr. Ariel will describe in a little bit more detail currently and throughout the weekend. And since Friday, we've been in this low orange sort of scenario. High, we're calling it, there's an elevated risk of community spread. And so those guidelines are really designed to be a point of information for the entire community as a way to think about, okay, people have brought this data together. They're telling me this is where it is right now. I can now make a choice about my behavior based on that understanding and hopefully simplify that, although you'll see with some of the graphs, you can also dive in and check out the data. Right now, also, this is available on the TMRPA website. You can see there the URL, tmrpa.org/covid-wc. I've actually secured some better names, and so we're going to be working on getting a better name for that very soon. So these are the five indicators, as mentioned, that we selected, again, that we were able to get reliably. It runs the continuum from very leading indicators, people seeking to get a test, all the way to folks that are in the hospital because they have COVID. So the first one is COVID risk assessments. Those are received by the Health District when anyone wants to get a test. They've been transmitting that to us daily via email. COVID test positivity, a measure of, given the number of tests administered daily, how many are coming back with positive results. It's really a measure of, keeping that down is an indication that we're doing enough testing and we're understanding the spread of the disease in our community. The daily new COVID cases per 100,000, this is normalized by population to allow for comparison to other counties, and just really tracks how our daily caseload is increasing or decreasing, or maybe stable. Medical interventions, that's really looking at two things, looking at hospitalization as a first step, and then also looking at the number of folks in the hospital with COVID that need to be put into an ICU bed. So both of those things factor into that fourth indicator. And then finally, we have a hospital capacity measure, which looks at the availability of licensed hospital beds as well as ICU beds, and those two things contribute. Each of these indicators can generate a score of between zero to three. So if everything was at the maximum worst-case scenario, you would get a score of 15. The highest score so far that's been generated has been 10, I believe. So a little tough to see on the screen there, but these are the model assumptions by indicator, because it does matter where the breaks get drawn in terms of how we're going to score this thing. In terms of the risk assessments, the data, as you'll see in a sec here from the slide, is a little bit noisy up and down. There seems to be less folks on the weekends requesting a test and more during the week, so we kind of see that. So we look at a 14-day slope, and that's, you know, we've done that, come up with that number in association with the Health District, with Heather Kerwin, who's part of our subcommittee, and Kevin Dick. And if those risk assessments are rising, you know, very steeply, then it's going to generate a high score. In terms of test positivity, we've recently sort of adjusted these based on the fact that we're now getting the test positivity measure directly from the State Division of Health and Human Services. They have access to all the test data that's administered and all the results, and they're generating that test positivity number, which I got this morning, is at 7.3%, which is great, because we're actually coming down. It was at 8.3, and previous to that, it was at 9.1. So we're moving in the right direction. And those breaks are set to reflect advice from Dr. Zom, who's the chief medical officer at the Division of Public and Behavioral Health and is assisting the governor on the COVID Response Task Force. He indicated that a test positivity below three would be ideal, so that's where we set the floor. And then 7% really relates to the governor's reopening plan, where we want to see test positivity for any given county below 7% as one of the scoring mechanisms for that. Moving on to new daily cases per 100,000, early on, there was a study done by Harvard Global Health Institute, where they looked across the country in each county, and looking at new daily cases, they normalized by population to allow for comparison across the counties. We adopted their class break system, and it seems to be doing a good job of tracking the proliferation of new cases. In terms of medical interventions, we're really looking for change. So in this, we look for a percent change. If the last seven days have been such a percent higher than a full 14-day average, average of seven days versus an average of 14 days, then we're trending up or down. We're taking that into account. So it's a measure of our hospitalizations and ICU bed use going up or down. And then finally, hospital capacity, those breaks were informed directly by the doctors, medical professionals, and the hospital administrators that were on the team. And so basically, they're just a capacity measure. Anything under 70%, we're scoring zero, and then it's bins of 10% up to over 90%, which would generate a score of three. We recognize that, you know, realistically, we've done a lot of validation and checking on this stuff. As information becomes available, we might have to fine tune and make some changes, but this is where we're at now, and, you know, these kinds of models are always a work in progress, really. But we think it's doing a good job of capturing that, all of these things and how they work together. If they're all high, it's going to be an indication, an additive indication, that we're in trouble. And if they're all low, that would mean that we're doing pretty darn good. This is looking at the historic calculation of the risk back to about, I guess, late June. And as you can see, there's kind of a mountain to the left there. That was right around the Fourth of July, when we actually were generating some scores based on those thresholds I just described, that got us into the red zone. Cases were very high, medical interventions were up, and risk assessments were probably an all-time high at that time, being received by the Health District. Since then, a lot of that stuff has come down, and we've been sort of cruising in a, it's hard to see the colors, but kind of a higher yellow, lower orange scenario. And you can see the scale there on the right, depending on how we score these things, how it adds up, rather, you'll fall into one of the color categories, and then that will be automatically updated daily on the website. I would add that it's a day behind of reality, because we have to have a day for this data to be collected and delivered to us, but it's about as real time as we could get. Okay, so just want to quickly run through each of the five indicators and the data feeding into it. This, what we're seeing here is actually data from last week. I've since updated the graphs on the website, so if you want data as of yesterday, you can go to tmrpa.org/covid-wc, the worst URL ever, and go and see what has changed. But I think basically what you can see is this is the risk assessment data. It's generally been trending down recently, although you can see that at the very end there, we do have a bit of a spike. The bars in the background represent that historic risk that we had calculated. This one's tougher to see, but you can see at the very end, there's a black line. That's the test positivity number directly from the state. Prior to that, we were pulling data off the state's dashboard about people tested daily and new cases daily. And so I've factored that data to match up with the approach that they're using there now at the state. But going forward, we'll just be accepting that data from the state, and they will be working towards a new dashboard that will give us daily value of test positivity. You can see here, new cases daily per 100,000 people. It has stayed consistently high. It did spike around late June, early July, and then you can see there, I think it's the middle of July or so, but we've been in our second, or rather, third tier of that scoring, so we've been generating a score of two throughout this entire time series for this metric. Here, we're looking at hospitalization data. Overall trend is really good. Hospitalization is decreasing over time. You can see a slight uptick in the recent couple of days, but it's pretty darn small. Likewise, ICU bed use due to COVID has declined overall through the record, with a little bit of an increase here recently. Some of that is probably driving why we see orange bars at the right side of this graph. And finally, here, we're looking at total hospital bed use. This is hospital capacity. You can see it's been well under, I believe, I can't really read it, it looks like 60%, but well under the 70% mark for several weeks now. And likewise, ICU bed use in general, and this is for, both those measures are for total hospital bed use, total ICU bed use, not just due to COVID. And the reason we wanted to look at that is, you know, flattening the curve. We want to make sure that the hospitals can take the surge if it were to flare up, or it could be hospital use based on something else. I mean, if the flu flares up this fall, that could put some folks in the hospital, so we want to make sure we're tracking all the causes of why folks are in the hospital. So with that, I'm going to move to the guidelines and pass it over to Dr. Ariel, who can talk about those right here.
Hello? Okay, thank you. Well, I want to, first of all, thank Superintendent McNeil and the members of the board for inviting us, and I've had the privilege of working with some pretty amazing team members, two of which you see here, and the rest on the subcommittee and the greater committee. And also, I need to thank Mayor Shivi for the opportunity and for consulman Devin Reese for suggesting that I join. And it's been a lot of hard work, but I think we've made a lot of progress. Okay, so why, so we have, we have a, you know, kind of like a speedometer there with green to the left and purple to the right, and there are some guidelines, but they're guidelines for individual behavior. This is not for business operations. This is not This is not for how to run a school. These are suggestions for individual behavior. When you're in the green, you can go about your business. You should still wear a mask and observe rules that businesses and schools impose. And then as the meter kind of goes to the right, the risk level goes up, so now you're not going to meet with large groups of people. When you get to, when you get to the orange there, you're, you try to limit yourself to no more than 10 people around you, maintaining social distances, always wearing your mask, washing your hands. And then you go all the way to the right, and now you're, as the further you go to the right, the more is the need to stay home, not leave your house unless you absolutely have to. But those are, again, those are individual behaviors. Now, why are we so, you know, why are we so insistent on that? Well, kids, kids get more mild COVID cases generally than adults do. However, once a child's in the hospital, there is a third chance, there's a 33% chance that that kid's going to be in the ICU and might need mechanical ventilation. And so what happens in the hospital to a child is just as bad, if not worse, than what happens to an adult. Additionally, in your school district, you know that there are a lot of kids with obesity, they're overweight, they have type 2 diabetes, they have all kinds of other conditions, they have asthma, and some of them have chronic, have asthma that's not well-controlled that then becomes essentially a form of juvenile chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, the same thing that the smokers get. And so all these kids are at high risk for complications. And so it's very, very important to keep them safe because I don't want them getting COVID because in their cases, the COVID is going to be a lot worse. I believe sometime this summer, there was a spike in pediatric cases nationwide. Fortunately, here in Washoe County, we didn't feel, you know, the effects of that. But when the kids get sick, even if it's mild, even if they don't have many symptoms, they take it home. They take it home and give it to the adults. What happens to the adults? Well, a recent German study showed that even with no symptoms or very mild symptoms, 78% of adults in one study who had COVID ended up with heart damage that was, that potentially was lifelong, okay? We're talking about damage to the heart muscle, damage to the valves, things like that. There have been adults and even some adolescents who've had little or no symptoms from COVID and yet have been shown to have suffered permanent damage to the lungs, fibrosis in the lungs. So it's important to not consider COVID just a bad cold because there are things that can happen months or, you know, potentially years later that are from the COVID and are not visible right now. Okay, so, but how do we, how does this, how does this relate to the school district? I don't want to just go through these suggestions because just, you know, from a general sense, I want to be able to relate it to how a school district should react. Well, the school district is a fabulous platform for allowing parents and students to use that platform to teach each other how to deal. I know that you're short of staff. I know that you're short on psychologists. I know that you're short on counselors. You're short on teachers. Everybody's, everybody's working at 110% capacity. So what you can do is use the school district as a platform, use the schools as a platform to let the parents and the students teach each other how to cope with this. What do I mean by that specifically? Okay, so how to, you know, if you, if you need study groups, how to put study groups together in a socially safe way? How to take care of homework and study for a test as a group, virtually as a group or in safe ways, socially distanced? How do you efficiently study for a test? Because it's, it's, it's showing, you know, when kids study as a group, they tend to do better on tests, right? And they help each other before the test. If they have, if you have group projects that have to be turned in, how do you, how do you arrange it so that every member of the group can contribute to the project? This is not something that the schools should become, you know, top-down from the schools because you don't have enough staff and teachers to do it anyway. So let the, let the school be a platform to let the, let the students and the parents show each other how to cope with these things. Additionally, there's the issue of mental health, and some of the public commenters talked about it. There are students and parents with bipolar disease, depression, anxiety. There are students here with autism whose routine has been terribly disrupted by the COVID. As you know, those students need routine, they need a regimented routine, and when you take them off their routine, they suffer from it. So you can't, you can't tell them how to cope. They have to, they have to formulate that coping themselves with support. Support from the pediatrician, support from the psychiatrist, support from counselors and school psychologists. So in order to use the resources that you have most efficiently, let the parents and the students do this, and you support them as they come up with solutions. They know a lot, and they can take some of the burden off of the overtaxed staff. You can empower them to run their, you know, to run their own coping strategies and then teach each other how to do that. And I think that's, that's, that's one way in which you can, you can husband your resources and use them most efficiently. And that's not just for school activities. They'll teach each other how to, how to put together a quinceañera virtually, how to, you know, how to celebrate somebody's birthday, or what happens, what happens at Thanksgiving, you know? This is, this will be the first fall where we have Thanksgiving, where you can't just crowd together and watch the Dallas Cowboys play football. So these are, even though these are not directly school-related items, school is still a great platform for all these people to communicate with each other, and you can facilitate that. And in facilitating that, you can reduce the stress on them. The COVID situation worsens mental illness. It worsens stress in normal people. I don't look terribly stressed to you right now, maybe, but, but, you know, I think about it, too. I get, my life has been changed, and one of the, one of the ways that I cope with the stress is by, is by fighting and by working on this committee and coming up, trying to come up with, working on the threat meter and kind of coming up with solutions to help my community get better. That's, that's how I can sleep at night, knowing that I, you know, gave 100% every day to helping us recover from this. So if you help the students and the parents find coping strategy and find ways to productively help each other, that would be, that would be just awesome. And it wouldn't require necessarily overly taxing your staff or spending more money. It's just, it's, it's one way of making do with the resources that you have. So with that, that's, oh, there is one, I'm sorry, there is one more message. I apologize. And that's the vaccinations. We've had 64, a 64% drop in vaccination rates. That started back in March, and then it improved during the summer, and then there was another drop in vaccines in the fall. And I'm very concerned about that, and so I want, I would like the school district also to work with the parents to improve vaccination rates, encourage them to go back to the doctor. It's safe to go to the pediatrician's office to get vaccines. Get these vaccines done because the flu is not just a bad cold. If you win the grand prize after you get the flu, you could end up in the hospital, in the ICU. The last patient that was in my office with culture-proven flu, it destroyed half his brain. He went from being a typical fifth grader to being somebody who pooped in a diaper and had to be hand-fed and couldn't talk, couldn't walk, was deaf, you know, and that was, that was basically it. That's for the rest of his life. It's rare, but it does happen. So things like the measles, you end up, if there's a measles outbreak here, everybody, someone who gets the measles will, it'll knock out the immune system for two, for up to two years. It'll be as if that person was never vaccinated against anything. So this is something, this is something that we really, really have to work on, and again, the schools can play a role on this. And so that's, that's what I wanted to say, and I know it's late, so we can get the questions done.
Does that wrap up the presentation, Dr. Lamarcas?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we could go back to the superintendent recommendation. I'm not sure, Dr. McNeil, if you wanted to walk through that now or if you just wanted to open up the questions.
I think we'll do questions and discussion first, and before we get to that, I just would again like to thank you, Dr. Ariel, Dr. Smith, and Dr. Nielsen for making the time to be here tonight and share a lot more information with us about the threat meter. It's really been, as just a citizen, impressive for me to see all the work that people are volunteering to do, all in the name of just trying to better educate and better communicate with the community about what we can do to protect not just, you know, ourselves, but really everyone as a whole. And I really, truly appreciate all the work that went into that. So, and thank you, Dr. Lamarcas, for liaising with this group and helping make sure that the school district was kept in the loop and aware of everything. So I will now turn it over to my fellow trustees and see if anyone has questions. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you all so much, and thank you to everybody who's served on the task force. I know, I think we all had the same goal, which was to hear from people who were knowledgeable about what the risks are and what we can all be doing about it. So I want to make it clear, we, and for the public who's listening to our meeting, it was never the board's intention to dump something on you to have to decide that is our decision. We wanted consultation from people who are epidemiologists and are in public health and are medical professionals because certainly none of us are. So it was certainly not our intention to do that. And certainly, we understand that we have a prevention role. We are a place where tens of thousands of people congregate every day, and so we have an opportunity to be a partner in that. We wanted to be coordinating with the rest of the region and make sure that we were in step. So just for everyone's knowledge and clarification, we also didn't know at the beginning of this process that there was some specific intention by the task force not to have it be used to help make some of these decisions. So I think a lot of folks in the public have gotten a wrong impression, both about our work and also about the work of the task force and how that could work together. So apologies to you all that you've gotten wrapped up in this misunderstanding and misinterpretation of what the intentions were. But really, we've been struggling with this, as you know, for several weeks, and we were delighted to hear that there was this effort. Jeremy and I were on a Zoom just before a regional planning governing board meeting started, and Councilwoman Dour was talking about it with Jeremy, and I said, wait a minute, what, what is that? What are you talking about? And we were at the same time working on what should our thresholds be for the very, very important decisions that this board has had to make about opening and closing and how we would manage those efforts. So I just wanted to kind of clear the air that we never had that expectation of you, that you were going to make decisions that we should be making, and nor are we doing, nor would we be doing that tonight. We just want to benefit from the great work that you all have done. We also did not, when we developed our original preliminary approval, and we did not adopt metrics, and a lot of people thought that we adopted metrics, but we didn't. We gave some preliminary approval so that we could hear from experts. The metrics that we picked at the time were not easily available in one place. They were not something that the public could follow on their own. So all of that came together. There was a sort of a convergence of needs. One of the needs was for all of us to have something that the public could look at so that they could know what they could expect from us, and then we wanted to have the benefit of having expertise and knowledge that we don't possess. So that being said, I just wanted to make sure and get that on the record because there has been a lot of misunderstanding about that. But again, apologies to you all and thank you to you all. It is a useful tool for us, and we'll have more conversation about that. It's not, I know Dr. Smith has said perhaps it could be a secondary tool, and really, it's part of the mix for us. It's not the only thing we would be looking at, but it definitely, you've done great work, and it will continue under the TMRPA. You've done great work, and we want to take, have the benefit of that great work as part of our decision process, but not the only thing. I think I can speak for my fellow trustees, and I see some heads nodding. That's, that's where our intention is. So thank you, thank you so much for the good work, and thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions for our presenters before we start our discussion? And I do know we have one public comment, I believe, on this one. Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you all for being here. And just as my colleague, trustee Simon Holland, said, I think I can speak for her and myself and Dr. Lamarcas and Dr. McNeil, that we found it an honor to be able to be involved in the conversations that the task force was having because it really did, as one trustee, it certainly informed me a lot on what the expertise, of what the experts were saying about this issue that we're struggling with, for, as a district, but also for our families. I mean, we got to this place because our intention is to give as much information to our families and to our educators as possible so that they can plan based upon things as they move. I guess I would just say this again, so just to concur, thank you for that, and I would concur, and even if you go back and look at our meeting, our intention was to make sure that what we do is in alignment so that we, as a region, can really be on the same page. For example, we don't want, say for an example, the threat meter to really indicate that everything should be shut down because things are really in the severe purple, and we're saying full-time school for everybody in person. I mean, that, that would send a message across the region that we don't want to have, and I think the public is really looking for something that they can kind of put their arms around, and man, how helpful would it be if they're in alignment with each other and not in contradiction to each other? So that was truly our full intent. That's what our, that's what our motion said. When our motion was made, somehow or another, it got out there in a very different way, but please know that was, that was certainly the intention. I guess my question, and maybe, Dr. Smith, you can comment on this, some of the questions that we asked, because we asked a bunch of questions while on those task force Zoom calls. Did you, I guess I'd just ask if, just for the public, as we deal with this and think about what our options are as we move forward, again, to be as safe as we possibly can in whatever state that we're in, but certainly either can jump, can jump on, is the feeling as we ask for, as we ask the task force for just advice in moving forward and lines and so on? I mean, those were just some general ideas, not, we don't want you to, those are our decisions to make, and we made it very clear. In fact, we said we didn't want Superintendent McNeil to make those decisions because we're elected to make those decisions. There are decisions to make, but certainly, and then we had a nice little conversation, I guess, in listening, and I took copious notes, as I'm sure my colleagues did. If you can share some of that for the, for the public, if you recall, I think that would be helpful as we, as we go through this as well.
Absolutely. Great comments. Thank you very much for that, and I totally agree, and a good question as well. I think, obviously, you know, my, my goal on the, on the task force or on the subcommittee was, I'm not the health expert or medical expert. I'm pretty good at data handling and coding and stuff, so I just wanted to take the guidance of, of the experts and try to implement it into something that we could use. But also, you know, as TMRPA, we have a role of facilitating collaboration and intergovernmental coordination. And so that's something that I'm going to continue to work on through this process. I think, you know, we are working with the health district. We've had many discussions with you. I've been able to work with Dr. Lamarcas and provide him data. And so, you know, this tool is designed to be transparent and to put that information out there for everyone to see. We've come up with a model that puts it together. I'm sure folks could argue with the brakes, you know, and we could talk about that, but the information is there, and it's the information that's public-facing that everyone could get. So, you know, I think we've really tried to just simplify. You know, sometimes it's difficult when you have so much data. You know, you've heard of, I'm sure, analysis paralysis. I certainly suffered from that in my life before. But, you know, what we found is that it was tough to get data about Washoe County specifically. It was tough to get data that was near real-time, right? And it's also tough to get data that's contextualized through time. So you'll often hear a report of what happened in a given day, but unless you're really tracking that in a spreadsheet or your brain works that way, I guess it's hard to, it's hard to compare one day to the next or to last week or to keep up with that. And so this meter does seek to contextualize that and really, I think, you know, synthesize data into actionable information. And that's what the guidelines are really about. It's to empower community members that look at this, that are interested to, you know, to look at that data and say, okay, well, today it's orange. What does that mean? And I can go to each data slide and see what's been happening with all of these things and make some decisions for yourself about how you want to interact in the yourself about how you want to interact in the community based on that info. But I'd be happy to turn it over to either of the other two folks here or Dr. Lamarcas.
Well, I agree with Jeremy 100%. And, you know, the other thing about the Mayor's Working Group, just in the last couple months, has really expanded. I mean, at the last call, we had all three CEOs from the major hospitals. I don't, I think we invited the VA. I don't know if they came. We had the Health District. We had Washoe County School District represented. And at the outset of this, I think a lot of us were concerned and frustrated, is how is Northern Nevada going to pull it all together? And this Working Group is just, you know, a reflection of that. I don't expect the threat meter to be the last thing to come out of the group. I think we've accomplished the task, and we're going to maintain it, and keep refining the threat meter. But we're still working on plenty of other things as well. So we really enjoyed your presence at our last few meetings, and we welcome your presence at all our meetings, because it really does help to hear your perspective. And obviously, I think you guys appreciate our perspective. So we've appreciated it.
I'd like to add, too, that, as I said, this meter is intended to guide personal behavior, and I've outlined how the School District can facilitate cooperation among your students and parents in terms of determining personal behavior at school and at home. But it also does not, we don't want to substitute the judgment of our group or the COVID meter for the judgment of your own personal position. So this is a guide to how to keep you safe generally, you know, in public and at home, but you still need to go see your doctor. And each child and each parent, each person should go to regular visits with the doctor. If you, especially if you have a chronic condition, I encourage everybody to go and attend their regularly scheduled visits with either the primary care or the specialist to continue treating that condition and keep it under control, because it's especially important even now with the risk of being infected by coronavirus or the flu as we're getting into the flu season. So this is intended to help everybody, but you go see your doctor and follow your doctor's advice, and that's going to be an important point person for you in maintaining your health.
All right. Thank you so much. Trustee Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I just wanted to thank you all for being here, and thank everyone on the task force for giving their time, the elected officials, medical experts. This meter is really helpful, and it's also helpful to get the context, that it's not necessarily designed to be a red line for the School District, but designed to show our citizens how to behave in that given day, but also a tool for the School District to monitor what's happening here in our community. It's really important for us to monitor that and to be aware of what's going on. And I also appreciate that it's local, and I appreciate the metrics that you use, because I think we all had that frustration in the spring and the summer of having all this information thrown at us from all these different sources, and then trying to figure out what's important, what's not important, what should we use, and to get this kind of information that is supposed to be, I don't know how to put this, but to prevent a death, for example, or to prevent a significant spread in our community. I appreciate that, and I'm really happy to know that the work will continue for other things come down the line. And I really appreciate the working relationship that the School District will have to be a partner, because we are a partner in our, in this region. And so I just appreciate the work. And, I mean, my whole opinion on this has changed as we've had these discussions the last few board meetings, as we get more information. And so I really appreciate the extra work that's being put in to benefit our community. So again, thank you very much for your service on this, and thank you for being here. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, trustee Cottle. If this is a good time, then I think we'll do our public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, Jackie. Trustee Calvert.
Thank you. And I just had a question as to how do you communicate this to businesses and the Trucking Meadows? How do you get the information such as this to them? So possibly they can give it to their coworkers or workers. So how is that disseminated in the community?
Thank you. Great question. Right now, our rollout, we had a press release on Friday. We're here talking about it right here, trying to get the word out. Anne Silver from the Chamber of Commerce has also participated on the Mayor's Advisor Team, the task force. And so I think circling back with her would be a good idea, to see if she has some specific strategies, because obviously, she's very concerned about getting this information out to the business community. I think working on the branding of the website name will help a little bit, too, and kind of doing a little bit of a rollout with social media. Hopefully, we can do something to that end. And also, we are working on a Spanish translation, too. I failed to mention that. That's coming as soon as possible. So I could, I'll get more information for you. That's all I have right now. But I think, you know, we're trying to come up with a plan to get the word out.
Good. Great. Thank you so much. All right. I'll turn it over to JJ for our public comment.
Malia Pukta, Pablo Nava Duran, Natha Anderson. We also received emails from Becky Kellett, Larry Cates, Dawn McHenry with the Washoe School Principals Association, Jesse Martin, and Michelle Roney.
Hi again. Sorry, I was in the other room, because I can't hear very well in here. So I just wanted to say that, you know, you guys have taken up the discussion of what metrics you're going to use several times. I think the first time that I heard it mentioned was on that hours-long meeting that ended at like 1:00 a.m., that I stayed up and watched the whole thing, when you decided to ignore the Health District's recommendations to not open the middle school and high school for in-person. Honestly, when you made that decision, you should have had something in place so that you knew when you were going to call for the schools to be closed. This going back and forth, it feels very much like you're shopping for different metrics for somebody that's going to give you exactly what you want so that you're not the bad guy. This is a big district. You guys are not in an enviable position at all. No decision you make is going to be right by everybody. Everybody is going to find a flaw, but you got to do something. You have to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pukta.
Pablo Nava Duran, Natha Anderson.
So I thought the Miro is still like high. So remember, so what happened if you reached a very purple one, like very high COVID-19? That mean that we had to shut down or everything? How about the red one? That we get the shutdown, or we could still have this in-person learning? And I also forgot to mention that I got the bachelor's degree on Mel, so there we go. And give a moment finish about COVID-19.
Thank you, Mr. Nava Duran.
Natha Anderson.
Good evening, Natha Anderson. On behalf of the Washoe Education Association, thank you for the very long night. And I think you heard earlier, the frustrations being experienced by many of our educators. For today's presentation, though, I think one of the things that's very easy for us to forget about is the safety issue. So I'm just going to reiterate how important it is to have this decision made, if possible, the sooner the better, as to what will be necessary to close a school down, or to close the schools down. I appreciate the meter is to really allow us to know about the behaviors and how we need to make changes. But as teachers and also as students, sometimes it's hard for us to do that, because that is a decision that is out of our hands. However, if the decision is made by this body as to what will be necessitate, or what will necessitate a School District or even a school to close down, this will be incredibly helpful for our teachers, and that some of those frustrations might be able to be taken away. I would also like to add, however, that it'd be wonderful to have this decision tonight, and also to add in that staffing levels needs to be discussed. Unfortunately, many, many, as you heard tonight, many of our educators are unable to get prep periods or have time to actually prepare for their lessons the next day. I spoke with a high school teacher, science teacher, last week, who should have had her prep three days. Okay, that sounds about right, because it was blocked period. She had it one day. And during that one day, the entire prep was spent on doing the substitute rechecks, you know, how you have to double-check your rechecking, because of how many students she has. So when you're considering what needs to be thought of, please consider the staffing levels as well. I think this metrics or this meter is a wonderful item, but again, it cannot be the sole item. I ask also that you consider the staffing levels. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
That's all I have.
All right. So that takes us to our superintendent recommendation. If this is a good time, and then we can lead into our discussion.
Thank you very much, President Raymond, members of the board. So in discussing this with our COVID task force, and then just being present on the Mayor's Task Force, a lot of thought, you know, was important to put into this recommendation. It's not an easy recommendation to make. And so in taking into, you know, account all of the discussions that you all have had over the last few meetings, and the information that we know now about the metrics, I look back at test positivity and the amount of information that the medical community and epidemiologists have learned since this pandemic started about test positivity. And I will say that there is not one equal measure of test positivity across this country, and that's frustrating. That's frustrating for me as a superintendent. It's frustrating for us as community members, and I would probably imagine it's frustrating for the board as well. But in hearing all of the discussions and taking into account our plans and what we've put into place in the Washoe County School District, and I've said this, you know, on the record a few times, but when we're looking at our School District right now, we're actually looking at three separate, smaller districts. We have a hybrid district. We have an in-person district, and we have a distance learning district. And all of that information together has led me to make this recommendation, that we use the risk meter, not the threat meter, but the risk meter, as not the only measurement as far as when we're talking about the closing or the opening of schools, and that it's used as a behavior modification tool for our community. And I also say this as a member of our community. We just got out of a three-day weekend, and I think it's going to be really important to see over the next two weeks what our test positivity rate is going to be and the amount of new cases, because I would sincerely hope that our community, our region, has abided by all of the governor's directives and all of the mitigation efforts that we've put into place as a School District, but also as a community. So with that, you see my recommendation there, that it's not, that the threat or the risk meter is used as just one tool in the toolkit, and that it's not just a line drawn in the sand measurement tool.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. McNeil. And I know that you and the members of the COVID team at the Washoe County School District did spend a lot of time discussing this. And I think, you know, just to kick things off, I can say, echoing what trustee Cottle said, just how much I've grown and changed in my perspective on the metrics. I look back to the online meeting in July, I think it was, June, July, where we first kind of mentioned this idea. And I think even nationally, you were sort of seeing things in that kind of level of a threshold that you don't go beyond, and if you do, it's a shutdown. And I just think we've seen nationally that change, just as we have locally. I think when I've learned more and more about the testing in our region, the test positivity rates, the case per 100,000, all those different factors, you know, I think it's become clear that just as a community and as a nation, this is just new for all of us. And it is very natural to me, when I think about that, that perceptions would change, that ideas would change and should. I shouldn't be stuck in exactly the same place in my thinking today as I was in early July, whether it's that I'm more cautious or more, you know, concerned or less. But even more than that, that we're learning new information about this disease every day. There are incredible scientists out there and doing amazing work. I don't remember any time in my life being able to watch science happen daily and learning about the process of epidemiology and, you know, just reading the articles about the different studies that are happening, where they're just refining more and more what causes the disease, how is it spread, where, you know, the infection rates and what that really looks like. And so it would be foolish of me to not accept all of that information and help it to guide me in my decision-making. That is all information that I didn't have in July that I now have. And if I were to ignore that and think, "Well, I just have to do exactly what we said because that's what we promised," then I think that would be incredibly foolish on my part, and it wouldn't be the right decision for our community. We knew early on that I think this was going to be the hardest decision we ever had to make about reopening schools. And none of us took lightly the recommendation of our Washoe County Health District, or any of the physicians, or, you know, staff members, families. We took every ounce of that information that came to us and weighed it equally, I think, in our decision-making. And I have to do that in this case, too. And I think, to me, what I've come to decide is that there isn't, for me, a line in the sand that we hit a number or a threshold and we shut down the entire district. I think it has to be on a site-based decision. And this is actually what I believe the Health District Director, Kevin Dick, said just last week, that he's going to be looking on a school-by-school basis. So I think that's what our district should do. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't find better ways and more effective ways to communicate with our families, with our staff, with our community about what it takes to trigger a school being completely shut down, or a classroom, or, you know, a portion of a classroom. But to me, I don't But to me, I don't see the use of this threat meter as we hit red and we're shut down. I see it as a tool to encourage better public health throughout the community. As Dr. Ariel said, I think our district has the responsibility to help teach our students not only, you know, the curriculum that we know is out there, but to encourage that conversation about, you know, safety outside of the classroom. And I think our focus as a district, as I said last time, should be really targeted right now, I believe, on making sure that we are following all the guidelines and protocols that we set to make sure our classrooms are safe, that the handwashing, the masks, the disinfecting, the social distancing, the, you know, class size, all those things are taking place. So, you know, while I want to continue the conversation about what it takes to shut down a classroom or a school, I don't think that, for me, the right move is to shut down an entire district. If there were some point in time for our community where it got to a critical level, I don't think we need to have that line. I think it would come from the governor, from the Health District, or from us as trustees, you know, guiding the superintendent to know that this is the time. So I really appreciate, again, your time being here and the work of the task force. And I really want to say that I appreciated trustee Simon Holland addressing kind of some of how this got twisted. I really hope that you understand it was never my intent, or I don't think anyone on this board's intent, that we bring you here today to tell us what to do. I know that it's my decision, and I know that no matter what I decide, I'll be making people angry or happy, one way or the other. So that's enough. All right. Trustee Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President. I would concur with a lot of what you just said. The danger I see in a district-wide red line is it lacks context. And context, I do think, matters. And I think this is a great tool to use to monitor that if we are seeing increases to very high or severe, then we do need to have conversations as a district. We already have two red lines in place for individual schools, and it's not for COVID, it's just in general, the staffing levels and outbreaks. We're going to talk in our next presentation about closures, but if we don't have enough staff in a school, it's up to the district administration and consultation with the principal to decide, is there enough staff in this building to safely open? And we also have the outbreak plan. It's not just for COVID. We see it for other infections in our schools where the Health Department will close a school based on an outbreak. And that exists already, and those site-based decisions that are, the community in that school, for that school can understand it. The community can understand if there isn't enough staff, if there's a outbreak in that school. The community struggles to understand a district-wide, we see it with the smoke, we see it with snow. There's a difficulty understanding a district-wide decision when some regions are impacted more than others. So I do think it's an ongoing conversation for a district-wide closure. The more immediate conversation that I think we already have in place are the school-site decisions that are made. And like I've said, that is not new to COVID. So I know we'll discuss more of that in our next presentation, but this is a great tool for us to use to make future decisions because we can get context on what is moving this meter, and if this meter is moving for something that does pose a risk to schools or it causes schools a pose a risk to the community, then we need to take decisive action. So that's where I stand. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, trustee Cottle. It's hard for me to see what the cover's on. I'm not sure who was first. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we can safely say that there isn't a trustee here that wants to use the threat risk meter as a decision tool to close down schools. I think we all agree that certainly we want to monitor the risk meter and use it to communicate. And I want to agree with my colleague trustee Cottle, and I had this conversation with superintendent earlier today. This is really sort of multi-level chess for us. One of the layers does have to do with data and incidence of disease and positivity. One layer of the data has to do with school outbreaks, what's happening in schools, and one layer of the data has to do with staffing. And we know that there are certain thresholds beyond which we can't staff a school, we have to close that school. We also know that the Health District has their parameters for school outbreaks. But I still want to, I still want to encourage my colleagues to make some decisions tonight about at what point would there be a need to have closure of the district. And it may be a very far distant point, but it would only be done in conjunction with the decisions about school outbreaks and staffing. So it's not just a line in the sand. It's not just a red line. It would be a point at which we would be watching the risk meter, we would be watching the data within the community. But like businesses, we have a huge responsibility to help control, if we can, and we have a responsibility to our staff, and we have a responsibility to our families and our students to help control and to be part of that. We're coming up on flu season. We are also concerned about things like Labor Day gatherings that may cause things to spike. So I don't, as one trustee, I don't want to put it off from tonight. I would love to see us make some decisions, not that it's a red line or an absolute or an automatic, but that at this point, we would have to be considering it. And I think there are, there is enough data for us to understand that something like the seven-day average of new daily cases per 100,000 being greater than 25, that would be cause for us to stop and say, we need to talk about this. We need to take stock of this immediately. A seven-day average positivity rate greater than 10%, those things, to me, I think we still owe it to people to not say that conversation is going to take place another time, but to make some of those decisions tonight. Again, I'm not saying those would be automatic closures. They would be points at which we would be giving the superintendent and her team the authority to make decisions based on those other issues like school outbreaks. I also want, just one more point, to remind folks that school outbreaks, given the transmission rates of this disease and the contagiousness of it, will have school closures based on outbreaks at schools that would affect teachers who are parents. So if I'm a teacher in school A and school B has been closed, I'm affected by that anyway, and I may be excluded. We will have that sort of growing problem of exclusions even when it's just a school outbreak. So I would like to argue for us having, and I threw out some thresholds again, it would not be automatic, it would be a, almost a warning system. So I know I'm in the minority, but I just had to get it out there.
Trustee Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President. I would, I can get on board with what trustee Simon Holland is saying. I think I would just put it a little different. I don't know if I would grab one metric. I do think the meter is helpful because it takes into account many metrics. And so if the meter is in the very high range, I do think it should start a discussion, for sure. And like I said, context matters. So at that point, I do think it's important to get the context of what is causing that and then consulting with medical experts on is what is causing the meter to be in the very high range, something the school district should very much take into account. And to piggyback on the second point that my colleague stated, the closure of schools for outbreak, I do think needs to be monitored in a district-wide level because if you have multiple schools being closed for a COVID outbreak in the same timeframe, they could be connected. And I do think it's important to take a look at that, especially if the schools are in the same area. For example, where I am, if Sted Elementary and O'Brien Middle School had to be closed around the same time for outbreaks, they're right next to each other, it's the same community attending both schools, that would tell me that we need to watch that closely because North Valley's High School could be next. And so I do think that is important to monitor as well, and that impacts staffing because of the teachers being parents. But so if we do want to set a metric on when should the conversation start on if closing is appropriate, I do think potentially using the meter because it does take into account, I believe, five metrics to get to very high. So if those five metrics are hitting very high, conversation, I think, should definitely happen. How we do that and what that would actually entail, I think we need to discuss a little further. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Trustee Manetto.
I concur with what is being said. I think we need to focus on individual schools first, and I love this scale thing because it's like personal responsibility, which they're children, but still, their parents But I agree that if, but I don't necessarily think that if two schools next to each other need to be shut down, that means the whole district does, but I think we would agree with that. But we got to have something in place if something happens and we do need to shut down the whole district. We just need to have something in place.
Any further discussion?
Me in.
Vice President Taylor.
Oh, thank you. I can certainly chime in in that I am certainly, I would be concerned if we had a hard line in the sand. I think one of the things, one of the many things I learned in being part of the task force conversations that we had is that it wouldn't be wise to have a line in the sand, a hard line in the sand for when we're going to close the district. That's, again, one of the many things that I learned. I also learned and concur with, a decision should be made school by school. It makes sense because school populations are, I think, one of the, when the doctor said, school populations, they're almost like little towns, right? And you deal with towns separately, although there is still a connectivity to that. And, you know, we had had some conversations before about staffing levels is certainly an issue. I appreciate WA's comments through NASTA, the president, but that's been part of the conversations we have to have because at a certain point, you know, it isn't feasible to do school in a safe way. And I certainly think we need to take that into consideration. So I can certainly get with some, I forgot the term you used, trustee Simon Holland, some metrics that might get our attention when we need to begin to have, we need to be having this conversation. One of the things I do like about that is it doesn't make it seem as though the school district is here and what goes on in the community has no impact because it really does. You know, it really does. If our positivity rate is through the roof in the community, it's going to show up more frequently in the district. I mean, we have, I mean, correct me if I'm Dr. Lamarcas, have we, I know, we certainly know we've had cases in the district, have we had cases spreading in schools in the district in the?
It really depends on what you mean by that. We have definitely had many cases. I don't have the exact count to give you right now, but we've had them at the elementary level, the middle school level, the high school level. We haven't had a school shutdown, you know, a whole school shutdown as a result of a spread within a school. We've worked very closely, as we've talked before, with the Health Division. Contact tracing is going really well right now. We have priority with them. When we do have a positive case, we're getting messages every day from Margaret Allen and that team when we have a, you know, a spot where we have to do a study. The data that you had preliminarily wanted to look at as potential triggers, that information at this point has looked pretty good for the last couple of weeks. We have been in a downward trend, even though we've seen cases pick up in schools. So it's a hard question to answer.
Okay. I guess what I was looking for is have we had any outbreaks in schools? I mean, that's what, because part of our conversation is look, as we look from a school, from school to school standpoint, is we're looking at if we have schools with outbreaks, and certainly we want to be able to act appropriately based upon that school, but it may not be present in the school, in that same manner, in the school across town.
No, we've had positive cases and we've had exclusions due to close contacts. We have not had what would officially be an outbreak.
We haven't had, okay. That's what I wanted. At any rate, I can, thank you. At any rate, I can certainly see the wisdom in saying, there is some, and again, I forgot the phrase you used, trustee Simon Holland, but there's some wisdom to saying, hey, if we start getting here, it's going to be getting our attention. I think there's some wisdom to that and allows people to be able to plan, which I think is important. And allows the community to start looking at their behavior, which goes back to the threat meter, and look at the risk assessment to say, hey, there's some things we need to do, much like the conversation about Labor Day. We heard it a lot, watching the behavior over this weekend so that two weeks from now we don't have a big pop. That same conversation, I think, should be happening around the meter as well. Things are starting to move. We need to be paying more attention to it, and I think that we can certainly be a part of that conversation.
Thank you, Vice President Taylor. I think, you know, the proposal you're suggesting, trustee Simon Holland, I have no problem with, I think, as long as it is, you know, just part of the discussion where we can openly talk about what's happening in the community and what, you know, mitigation efforts could we be taking on at the schools, whether that be a closure or a shifting of models or something like that. I do think, as we've discussed frequently in these meetings, that it just needs to be something easy for staff and families and the community to see and to gauge where we are so that it isn't a sudden shift that we're all of a sudden having this conversation and in two days we might be in full distance, you know, because we're having a board meeting. I think that is so challenging for the community and the students and staff and everyone to kind of build up to a meeting where the significant discussion could throw everything into, you know, a change and there not be a clear kind of line or path that gets us there, that people can track and follow. The threat meter is an easy one for people to track and follow if we're looking at community spread and where we are there. And I'm in agreement that, I think with everyone here, that we want to make a decision if we're going to do this and get it done and move on. But I don't know if the, you know, staff is ready at this time with a idea of what those other layers are, the staffing layer and the outbreak layer, if that's what you're suggesting, that we have sort of the three different layers, and when they each reach a certain level, then we have the discussion.
If I may, Madam President. I'm not suggesting that we try to set lines for staffing or school outbreaks. I think they are, I think it's very important that our decision-making not be solely on what's going on in the community. So I think what I'm hearing is that, and again, I've heard very loud and clear from the task force folks that you don't want us to use the meter as a decider for when we would close. But I also think you understand that the data is the data. It's not the threat meter or the risk meter that we would be using, it's the underlying data. And the underlying data produces a certain level of risk. Trustee Cottle suggested that when the data underlying indicates that we're at, did you say very high risk? Very high risk. And the very high risk, again, the model assumptions chart adds up points. Very high risk. And the very high risk, again, the model assumptions chart, uh, adds up points. Uh, so it, you know, it wouldn't have a, a specific item. But, um, we could, we could have some sort of, um, I'm just testing out possible motions that, um, when the, when the data underlying the, um, the indicators suggests that the community is in the very high-risk, uh, level, we would then, the, the superintendent would pull her team together and look at school outbreaks or not necessarily outbreaks, student and staff incidents and staffing levels and come back to the board with a recommendation about whether there would be closure. Does that, I, I throw that out and welcome feedback. And pardon me, it's not just closure, but it's, as you said, President Raymond, going back to looking at other models, other learning models than the one that we're currently using.
Trustee Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I would, I agree with what Trustee Simon Holland is saying. I do think a part of the, the meter though is to consult with the medical experts to get their thoughts on the, the main driver for, um, the meter being very high and the kind of risk that it poses to schools and, uh, or schools in the community. For example, if the meter is hitting very high solely on hospitalization levels where we're seeing a significant increase in new patients and the, we're getting near capacity, that would be a tremendous concern for the school district. Um, and so like I said, context matters. As far as the staffing level, I do think that's separate. And it's, it's really up to the superintendent, district administration and consultation with the principal to decide if a school can safely operate. And school outbreaks is also completely separate. It's really has, doesn't have a ton to do with us. If the health department comes in and says, X Elementary School has an outbreak, we need to close it down, it closes. It closes down. There really isn't a board meeting that has to happen. At least to my knowledge, it's not what's happened in the past for other, for other outbreaks. So I do think those, those, um, metrics, if you will, are separate from the, from the district-wide conversation. It's related, but the district, we could be in the high range like we are now and the district's fine, but have one school that has an outbreak and has to be closed. So I do think the conversations are different, but also related. So I, I do agree with the district staff needs to look at the metric if it hits very high. But I do think we need to loop in student health services to consult with medical experts in the field. Um, and I would be interested to hear the medical experts that are on this task force because they've been so great for our local area in our state, to, to look at the information and, and guide us on what they feel is, is impacting it and give us that context. That's kind of what I would add. Thank you.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I wanted to clarify, Trustee Cottle, because I, I did, uh, correct myself. It wasn't just about school outbreaks. It's about incidence of cases in schools. And that may be with staff and it may be with students, but that is an important thing for us to be, and it's not separate to me. Um, it's sort of like you say, what's the context? I think the incidence of COVID in schools, uh, is an important part of the puzzle. It's not the only thing, but it's not separate. It would be part of, um, what we would be looking for, um, if we were to consider closure of the whole district. Or going to different models for the whole district.
Any other thoughts on the, uh, Dr. Lamarcas?
For what this is worth, it, it sounds like, and I could have misunderstood, but it sounds like, well, I, I think I've heard a couple of things. If we're in the very high risk range using the meter, by definition, that's gonna mean we're firing on a couple of indicators at least. Uh, we could certainly have a conversation about what's really driving that, if that's what's meant. It does sound, however, that what you're leaning towards is a discussion of the board based on information, including the meter. Um, so all I would suggest is that you define some timelines. I mean, we have open meeting laws. We have to get on an agenda. If you want the benefit of medical experts at your meeting, we kind of have to have some timeframes that we're working within. I don't know if we could, um, have a, basically a standing agenda item that we don't use unless necessary so that we just have that in process. Um, but I don't know what the dates would be. We had previously talked about Wednesday to Wednesday. Uh, maybe it would be something of that nature. So I guess what I'm getting at is we need time in order to have that conversation for you so that you can make informed decisions. I don't know what it would take either. I don't know if you need it to be in that very high range on just one day because this meter is updated every single day. So if it suddenly jumps up to red, but then the next day it's back down to, to yellow, um, do we still have a discussion? So I don't know if you need it to be over a period of time. Anyway, that's some comments.
Thank you. Our Chief General Counsel and I were just talking and we could definitely have a standing agenda item that would be titled sort of similarly to today's, that would just be on every, uh, agenda that, you know, we could consider pulling or not. Um, but I, that doesn't, I know, especially answer the part of your, um, question about kind of the lead time, um, that would be needed to get, you know, people ready to be there and then also that possible fluctuation. Uh, you know, some of what I've thought about too is just that the, um, the cause of, of those various spikes and what might be, you know, taking, leading us to that.
Sorry for the interruption. President Raymond, if I may, we just wanted to make the point that, given the way this thing is designed, uh, you know, absent any bizarre reporting issues in the data, which could create that, it'd be very unlikely that the meter would go from like a yellow to a red, back to a yellow. Typically, it's, it's escalating, but I think it would be worthwhile to consider, uh, a couple of days of a, of a given condition, uh, before, before making a move.
Thank you. That's very helpful to have that perspective. Trustee Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I like the idea of the standing agenda item because it gives the district, uh, and the board an opportunity to discuss where we are as a community. And if we see it at very high for, for one day, it could be something to monitor. I get concerned about setting like a specific count because, of course, what'll happen is if we say four days in a row, a Tuesday board meeting would be day three. And then if that Wednesday is four, now we're in a position of our next board meeting is two weeks. So if we just evaluate it, every board meeting, we'll have some good information over a two-week period. And if it arises to a issue where it's a really big issue, we could call a special meeting. We can always do that. But it gives us flexibility. So, but if it's a same item, we're gonna, we're gonna constantly discuss basically the state, the state of the community on how we're doing. And we can get a lot of updates during that item, including if there are staffing issues, outbreak. Uh, Trustee Hal, Simon Holland mentioned the, um, issues with, with positives in our, in our district and how that is, um, correlating into the risk meter. So I do think a, a broad agenda item that allows the board to take action, any type of action would probably be good to have. Thank you, Madam President.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'm gonna take a stab at, at a motion and just see if we can reach some conclusion. Um, so my motion would be that, uh, we have a standing item on the board's agenda to consider, uh, community risk. Uh, I would take out the wording that we have in here now about metrics for closure. I would just say that the board would have a standing item regarding community risk and any appropriate action by the district, uh, related to that risk. And further, that if the data shows the community is at very high risk, uh, over a, uh, one-week period, that, um, that we would consider action to change the learning model based on risk, based on incidents, case incidents in schools and/or, uh, adequacy of staffing levels.
Sorry. Motion by Trustee Simon Holland, second by Trustee Cottle.
I'm sorry. Trustee Simon Holland, can you please go over the last things that you talked about? Oh, JJ. Okay. Um, so you got the part about the standing item. And then if the data shows that the community is at very high risk over a one-week period, the board would consider action, consider, not take, consider action, uh, to change the learning model based on risk, uh, case incidents in schools and/or adequacy of staffing levels among other indicators. How about that?
Does that need a friendly for the, does that count as an amendment that? All right. So the motion by Trustee Simon Holland with the amendment and the second by Trustee Cottle with the friendly amendment. Now discussion?
Yeah, I just want to get a point of clarification. If we already have staffing levels for individual schools, we already have that in place and we already have, the health department already will determine outbreaks. If that's already in place, we don't need to add that to this motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we just want, I just want to make it clear that for anyone listening, that is already happening in place. It's not us saying we're not doing that. That's already there. This is something that we're doing that's new. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any other questions or, uh, Vice President Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, what's the feeling of my colleagues if we say, um, for up to seven days? So if our meeting happens to fall on day six and we're watching the trends, um, you know, as, as Dr. Smith has said, we're watching the trends and it's been that way, it's, we don't have to say, well, it hasn't been seven, right? If it, is that, are you, are we open to that?
I would accept that amendment. Yeah.
It's, it's meant to be friendly.
Always friendly.
Always.
My BFF.
So we have an amendment, amended motion? Did you get it, JJ? With a friendly, um, acceptance of that amendment? I'm sorry. Did someone have a question out here?
No, I was just gonna see if there's anything you all want to say about that motion since, and then.
But I think we appreciate you guys looking at the meter. Um, and if it is consistently high, um, call us and, you know, get ahold of us because we can help you wade through the data. Because we already know it's a disease of primarily older populations that get sick and hospitalized. And you could have a situation in which, you know, which we hope the kids will all be safe and not get particularly sick. But the meter is really driven and looking at the community, you could have elderly population getting the cases and, uh, driving hospitalizations, which could really drive the meter up. But the particular population you guys are looking at may be in better shape. So I guess the only thing we would caution is that, again, uh, look at the specific population that you guys are looking out for. But you guys do have staff and it's not just the kids. So, um, we're available for consultation and help anytime you guys need a hard look at the data and kind of walk you through it.
And we're happy to help.
Great.
Just give us a call.
If I may.
Yes.
I think that's, that helps speaks to what Dr., um, what, uh, Dr. Lamarcas was speaking of earlier in terms of getting to the experts and, and working through the data. Um, and, and as you said, uh, we, we would, you know, because we have students that go home to more vulnerable populations than we have staff members, it would still be good to know that. But when you, and you're speaking, doctor, it made me think of if there is the unfortunate, um, event of something in a nursing home, for an example, that may shoot some numbers up or something in the jail population or something that would still shoot them up over a period of time. But it certainly would be good for us to be able to dive into that and recognize those numbers may be up, but for something that really is separate from our population, whether it's students or, um, our educators. So I, I think that's very valuable. So thank you. I hadn't thought about that. Thank you.
Trustee Simon Holland and, uh, Trustee Cottle, I do have one question. I think the motion just mentions the high-risk category, but do we need to specify where that high risk is coming from and, and call out by name the threat meter?
I, I think I said very high risk.
I'm sorry, very high risk. Yeah, sorry.
And, and I'm, I'm trying to be.
Yeah.
So I, I would prefer not to put the risk meter in the motion because I know the mayor was very clear about not wanting that to be the basis of decision. And I'm just respectful of that. It's the underlying data that, uh, that shows the community is at very high risk.
I completely understand and agree. I think I'm just trying to understand if we need to clarify where the, maybe the underlying data is coming from or what we're looking at. But if everyone's good, I mean, I think it's implied in our conversation. Chief General Counsel?
Yeah, I think as long as the superintendent can reasonably interpret what you're talking about, and I see her nodding her head, then, you know, we can't, if you're gonna lay out every single factor that might exist, this is gonna take a lot longer than it, or, you know, than what we're at.
Point taken. All right. Trustee Cottle.
And it's very high risk and above.
Yes, sorry.
And it, and so, and I see what, what Katie's saying about, we don't necessarily want to reference the meter. It's, it's the data that's creating the environment of being very high or severe risk. And then it starts the conversation, but it doesn't, it's not a red line. And then it's up to us to decide how we go about that. And as was stated, context matters. What is driving it? Is it something that should concern us or, or the medical experts saying it's something to monitor, but it doesn't necessarily pose a risk right now? So I think the context matters. So I appreciate your offer to be a resource to us. That's very, very helpful. So thank you very much.
Superintendent McNeil.
So I'm just wondering, within that context, if you were able to say with the very high risk that, that we would be using the data indicators? Because it is the underlying data that's making that decision, that that's driving up to very high risk. That's the underlying data. So if you were to put in there, in using the data indicators, because if one pops to three, there's a difference between COVID test positivity jumping to three versus hospital capacity. So I think it's going to be that underlying data and which ones are going to pop to three, which would make your decision?
So right now, I think the motion just says data, if the data shows. So we could change that to if the data indicators show. Is that, did I get the wording right? Does that work for you? Okay. A many times amended motion by Trustee Simon Holland and this friendly acceptance of those amendments by the seconder, Trustee Cottle. If there's no further discussion, then we will vote. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Yay, we did it. All right. Thank you all so much again for the late night and being here. Appreciate your taking the time, as was stated, and just really appreciate your dedication to this and service outside of your very busy other lives. Thank you. All right. I know we have people waiting. It is 8:47. We are going to take a 20-minute recess. And when we come back, I would like to ask that we move up Agenda Item 4.05 to be heard, since we do have an individual here who is presenting on that item that's a guest. So if that works for everybody, then we will take our 20-minute recess. Thank you.
Take their seats.
Good evening, President Raymond, Superintendent McNeil, Trustees. This is item 4.05 on the agenda. This is discussion, possible action to authorize outside legal counsel and staff to basically reach a settlement with former Superintendent Davis. As you may recall, the Office of the General Counsel conducted an investigation last year, which concluded on July 1st. As a result of that investigation, I could not act as the attorney for the board in this matter. We were fortunate to get Mr. Dotson and his law firm to represent us, and so at this point, I'll just be turning it over to Mr. Dotson, who will be acting as legal counsel in this matter. I'll still be Board Legal Counsel, but that being said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dotson, and thanks for being here, Rob.
Your mic.
All right, let me try that again. Wow. Good evening, President Raymond, and Board of Trustees, Superintendent McNeil. As Chief General Counsel just identified, my name is Rob Dotson. As you know, I act as outside litigation counsel for the school district, the Board of Trustees, and at one point, Katie Simon-Holland in this matter. Just for point of reference for the presentation, this is a case that was brought by former Superintendent Davis pursuant to her employment contract, and the sole purpose, as we have viewed the case, is to determine whether the Washoe County School Board, all of you, had cause when it voted last July to terminate then-Supervisor Davis. The case was brought approximately a year ago, and we responded with a motion to dismiss that successfully dismissed some of the claims, including the claim against then-President Katie Simon-Holland. An amended complaint was filed, and we elected not to attempt to dismiss the remaining claims, and indeed, certainly, at least two of those claims, the claim for breach of contract and the claim for breach of the obligation of good faith in safe dealing, or fair dealing, excuse me, would survive any motion that could be brought. The case has been very well presented, or prepared, I should say, by your general counsel and your staff, which did an excellent job in preserving the evidence. All of you also in voting provided a very good record for the litigation. Nevertheless, there are claims that, as I just mentioned, are not subject to dismissal. So this matter, if it should proceed, will proceed to trial. The cost of litigation is significant, and I want to talk, before I present the proposed settlement here, I want to talk a little bit about that. Because of the pandemic, not a single deposition has been taken. This is a case where much discovery has been done, but like many cases that are in litigation right now, the discovery that has occurred has not been some of the very most expensive type, and that expense is not just in dollars. I would expect that we would spend well over $100,000 in litigation expenses paid to my firm between now and getting you to the first day of trial. That trial might last at least a week, it could last more. There's also expenses that are more ephemeral in nature. The loss of all of your time because every trustee that voted for termination's deposition would likely be taken. Certainly, the current superintendent's deposition would be taken, as would the general counsel's. Those events would very probably, at least a few of them, would very probably last an entire day, and during that time, of course, you would not be able to attend to the very important business that has been the discussion of the many hours of Board of Trustees meeting that preceded this presentation. And so I take that into account as I recommend this settlement to you. I would also suggest that there is a distraction that is caused by this case, that there are very, very important issues that you are all dealing with. You have incredibly important jobs, and you right now are standing right at the very front, in the trench, between what's happening at a national level and what's happening locally. And there is a very real distraction that is caused by anyone who is in litigation. I have been a litigator since 1993, and for everyone that is involved in litigation, whether as a witness or a party, there is a significant expense. To this district in recommending this proposal, I am recognizing that there is a distraction that will inevitably be caused by proceeding, if you choose to proceed with this litigation. This matter is before the presiding judge, Barry Breslow, and Judge Breslow, I think wisely, ordered the parties to a settlement conference. Many cases settle, many cases, or some cases do not, but many cases settle because of the parties recognizing the risks that we've just described, and also the risk that no matter how strong your case is, you can lose. The parties, and mostly the opposing counsel and I, agreed upon a settlement judge, which is another sitting judge in Washoe County, and that is Judge Bridget Robb. And Judge Robb agreed to act, free of charge, of course, as the settlement judge in this matter. The settlement mediation or settlement conference lasted approximately nine hours, and at the conclusion of that, this proposed settlement was agreed to. It is important to note, in considering and in me providing my presentation today and in answering any questions you might have, that the events at the settlement conference are generally considered confidential. It would be not proper for me to discuss things that were said, and they're not binding on the parties. And just because a compromise is reached, doesn't mean that anyone admits any wrong. Indeed, Judge Breslow and every judge that orders any party to a settlement conference does so, understanding and specifically directing that they engage in good faith negotiations at that settlement conference. In this case, the settlement conference was attended by President Raymond, Vice President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, General Counsel Rimbardo, Risk Manager James, and myself. The proposed terms of the settlement are as follows. There would be a joint statement, and this would be the statement that would be made to the press. Language of that joint statement was agreed to that day but could be slightly modified, but in general, that statement will focus on the parties electing, if a settlement is voted for by this group. That joint statement would focus on the parties desiring to end their dispute, move past their dispute, and move forward. From a monetary component, Ms. Davis would receive one year of PERS or a maximum amount of $70,000 of PERS which would be purchased by the Washoe County School District, so whichever is less. In other words, if it was determined that the expense to buy the equivalent of an additional year of service for her was $68,000, then that would be the expense to the district. If the expense was $74,000, the district would be limited to $70,000. It was, at the time of the settlement, contemplated that that amount could be paid directly by the school district to Nevada PERS. Since that time, we have had discussions with Nevada PERS, and we recognize there may be a difficulty in doing so, and there may be some limitations. I'm not convinced that all options in that regard have not been addressed, and so I would still hope that that would be the case, that there would be able to be a direct payment from the school district to Nevada PERS. In other words, no payment would pass through or be made to former Superintendent Davis. However, because it may be necessary that the payment come from her current employer, which I understand to be the Clark County School District, or from Ms. Davis, I would ask that if a motion is made to accept this proposed settlement, that that motion be made with flexibility to myself, the superintendent, and general counsel, to work with opposing counsel, so as to ensure that that money is spent for nothing other than PERS for Ms. Davis, and to make every effort that that money can be paid directly to Nevada PERS. I think that's important because it avoids any possible, or at least hopefully, I am not a tax attorney and I'm not giving tax advice, and certainly not giving tax advice to Ms. Davis, but hopefully, that would limit the risk of a tax consequence as a consequence of that, as a result of that payment. Also, as a term of the settlement, the parties would agree mutually to make no disparaging comments about each other. Ms. Davis has agreed that as she speaks or teaches, or in any fashion, that she would refrain from using proper names of individuals in any recitation of events, of her experiences at the Washoe County School District. Also, as is very common in litigation settlements, each party would bear their own costs and fees. In other words, Ms. Davis will be responsible for her own attorney's fees. The case would be dismissed with prejudice, and Judge Robb would maintain jurisdiction to assist us in resolving any disputes as we formalized the settlement agreement, or in the enforcement of the settlement agreement. I believe those are all the terms, and if you have any questions for me, I would, to the best of my ability, without invading the sanctity of the settlement discussions, respond to those.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dotson. I will look to see, I'll just take a moment to thank you for your time and support to our district in this way, and your continuing to work with us, you know, on this issue and providing guidance on how to move forward. Thank you.
It's been my pleasure.
Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, counsel. Just to, because I have to run out to do immediate events for a moment, I just want to be clear, and I believe I caught this, but I want to be clear for myself and also for the public, if this, if we do not agree this, agree, you know, vote that this settlement is in the best interest of the district, what is your anticipation or estimation on what could be ahead of us from a financial standpoint?
It's difficult to, as a litigator, there's always a question that is asked, but I sometimes draw the analogy to a dance, and you don't know what the other person's going to do. And so it's somewhat, it's impossible to predict with precision, but after decades of experience, I have a pretty good idea as to what would happen, and I recognize how many depositions would probably be taken, and not all these depositions would be taken by Ms. Davis, some would be taken by me. There are parties, that don't need to be named now, whose depositions I would like to take as part of our discovery in this case, and consequently, I would be very surprised if we did not spend at least $100,000 between now and the first day of trial. At that point in time, it is very typical that a trial day between staff, support, and costs is $7,000 a day. Let's presume, for the sake of argument, that we have five days, right? That would be actually kind of unusual, I would say. I think this case would more likely be seven days. It could be 10 days. If it is 10 days, you're up to $70,000. If it's my best estimate, or my lowest estimate, you're at $35,000. And so then you're at $135,000 as a best-case scenario, and just if you have the more probable period for the trial date, or trial period, you're at $170,000. And this, by the way, assumes that we do not engage in significant motion practice, and there are some discovery issues in this matter, which I won't bore you with, but related to privilege and the scope of discovery, and that dispute itself could cost $20,000. So it is for that reason, just from a monetary standpoint, that a settlement where the expenditure is $70,000 has my recommendation.
Thank you, counsel.
Trustee Simon-Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I think just to add on to that, so absent this settlement... I think just to add on to that, so absent this settlement, we would be looking at considerably more cost, and also no guarantee that the district would prevail and could be exposed to a much higher judgment. We have a responsibility, you were hired to defend the district, and that means if it goes to trial, we have to defend the district. We can't just not do that. So, so those costs would have been required, and again, no guarantee that, that a judge would rule in our favor. Certainly, we believed that a judge would. I also want to underscore what you referenced earlier, that prior to this settlement, a judge had already dismissed the open meeting law violation complaint and other complaints that were part of the set of complaints that we were presented with. So the district had, had been cleared of those things, they, some had been refiled, but again, we can't not respond, we have to respond when those kinds of charges are made, and so we would be looking at greater cost and no guarantee. So for those reasons, the settlement, while it doesn't make everyone happy, we know that there are people in the community that certainly would feel differently about it, but I think that it's the wisest course of action for the district at this time, and I appreciate the, the work that everyone did to, to bring this to resolution.
Thank you, Trustee Simon Holland. Trustee Minneto.
Thank you. I am one of those people who really doesn't want to do this, but I think it's what we need to do. It just is the responsible thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Minneto. Trustee Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President. So I've done a lot of, lot of thinking about this and struggled with it, and I do think that, I hear everything that's being said on, on it, being in the best interest of the district, but I get stuck on, is it right? And Ms. Davis committed a treasonous act against the district and betrayed the people that she was entrusted to serve and protect. And I just can't support giving her anything. So I absolutely will respect the majority of, of the board, but I just can't, I just can't get behind it with the evidence that we have and the act that she committed against the people here, so. But it's, it's a hard decision, but that's really where, where I landed after thinking about this for the last few weeks, so. But I thank you for your, for your support and your service and helping us through this. But that's, that's why I just feel it's best for, for me and the people I represent, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm, I'm listening to what, what my colleagues said, and I certainly respect that, Trustee Cottle. I think it's also important, as you said, to protect the staff, and I do think that it's in the best interest of the staff and the district that have all been involved in this to not continue to drag on something, you know, that could be hanging over the head of the district during this time when there's so many other things going on, and staff members that may or may not be involved, that may be deposed, or whatever the case may be. I think that would be, I think that would be difficult for them as well. So actually, part of this, in my mind, is, is to provide some security in just ending things, because it makes financial sense for the same staff members that we, I agree, that I think should be protected.
Thank you, Vice President Taylor. We will look to our recording secretary now and see if we have any public comment on this item.
We have no public comment for this item.
Okay. Well, I think it's time to move forward with a motion on this item, and, you know, I think I agree with much of what was said. I know that this has been a challenge for, you know, many in our staff to go through the process of, you know, the board meeting last July, all the way up to today, but I do think this is the best resolution, and again, appreciate your work in helping us get to this point today. I appreciate the time and efforts of my fellow trustee, Vice President Taylor, who was part of that settlement meeting, and our superintendent, Dr. McNeil, and Chief General Counsel Rimbardo, and their advisement on all of this. So I will be looking for a motion, and we want to try to find a way to provide that flexibility that Mr. Dotson suggested. I think my only comment to that end is that, you know, I, I think I would really want to emphasize that, to every extent possible, we work to get the settlement through PERS, whether that be through her current employer, or we find a way to make it work through Washoe County School District. Anyone want to take a stab at it?
I was, I was at the meeting, so I think it would make sense for me to make the motion. Let's see, where are we? Madam President, I move, I move that the Board of Trustees authorizes outside legal counsel and district staff, including but not limited to the superintendent, risk manager, and the office of the general counsel, to settle litigation in the Second Judicial District Court of the State of Nevada, in and for the county of Washoe, case number C V nineteen dash zero one seven one three, styled Tracy Davis and individual versus Washoe County School District. Washoe County School District Board of Trustees does I dash V individuals for payment to PERS or a corresponding, for payment to a, to a retirement account, to state retirement account? Does that cover that? I want to make sure I get that.
I, I would probably say Nevada personal, what's, what's PERS stand for?
I'm going with PERS. Okay, to, payment to Nevada PERS for the benefit of Tracy Davis, and the sum equal to the lesser of one year's contribution, or $70,000, as well as the other terms related thereto.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice President Taylor, and a second by Trustee Minneto. Do we need to, does that provide that flexibility, or should we say to the greatest extent possible, or?
I, I believe that's, that's, that should be adequate, and I would say this. If in our discussions, I mean, we, I think it is best for Ms. Davis, and I think it is best for the district, if that payment can be made directly to the PERS system. And therefore, we are going to endeavor to do that, either through this district or through her current employer. And if we should find it impossible to do so, then we'll come back, and if that's what, if that's necessary. And so I think we'll be fine with that language. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, is there any further? Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President, under discussion. I just want to speak for myself that I support this very reluctantly. I share the same discomfort and, and strong feelings that Trustee Cottle has described, that I, I did not want the district to have to make any, any settlement, but I also know that I don't want this to keep going on for another year at extremely high costs that are the taxpayers' costs that would be necessarily paid by the district. So I will be supporting it with great reluctance, but I understand why it's necessary to do so.
Vice President Taylor, did you have more to add?
Yeah, just to add, thank you, Madam President, and I would just say that, as counsel has stated, we, we were there nine hours, and so we went back and forth quite a bit, and almost walked out. I mean, the whole, all the things that negotiations happen, it was just, it was a difficult negotiation, and I will submit, and, and that I do think that this is the very best we could have come to, just based upon the time that we spent and the effort that everybody put in, and how we landed there. I do think this is, I certainly understand reluctance, because no one likes to pay an employee that didn't leave under great terms, right? I don't think any of us really, you know, would like to do that in an ideal situation, but I do think this is, this is the, the best place that we could have landed on that day, and, you know, nothing else primarily because, otherwise, we're looking at quite an expense to the district in the event that we don't prevail.
Thank you, Vice President Taylor. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay. So that motion passes five to one, and I believe Superintendent McNeil would like to say something.
Well, first of all, I do appreciate Attorney Dotson and all of your time and effort on this. I do feel very strongly, as the trustees know, just from individual meetings with them, that it's time to move forward. And as the superintendent of Washoe County, my due diligence is making sure that our staff is ready to move forward, and I feel very strongly about that, putting myself in that, in that position, and I know several others on our leadership team feel the same way, as well as other staff members within this district. It's time to move forward. We have a lot of good work to do in our school district, and so I'm, I'm very supportive of, of this decision, and I appreciate the trustees' vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. All right. Thank you both for being here, and you have to be here, but thank you, Mr. Dotson, for being here.
Thank you.
And have a good evening. Okay, that takes us to agenda item, back up to agenda item four point zero three, and this is Presentation and Discussion on the Decision-Making Process and the Steps Taken in Consideration of Closing Schools Due to Inclement Weather, Regional Emergencies, Health-Related Emergencies, and Interruption of Building Operations. This is for presentation and discussion only. I'd like to just acknowledge that these dedicated staff members have stayed with us late tonight, after getting up very early this morning to have to make one of these very tough decisions, and, and I think many of you hardly slept, so I appreciate your patience and sticking with us to be here. It's an important topic, and we just appreciate that we have the opportunity to share more about how these, again, very tough decisions are made. So I will go to, let me kick it off. Oh, okay, you. Our superintendent, Dr. Krista McNeil. It's a Debbie Byers Dorf on here, so.
Well, this is a request for Trustee Cottle, and I really do appreciate our staff putting this presentation together. I know it's been a very, very long day, very early morning, and, you know, today is a great example as far as why our systems work within the school district. I, I feel that we made the right decision for the safety of our students and our staff. And with that, I will turn it over to the A Team that's here, here in the Sparks High School gym. So with that, I believe it's going to be Mr. Etchart, who looks very nice in his bowtie.
Thank you very much. Good evening. We're going to begin tonight's discussion with winter weather closure and delay protocols. And when it comes to, I guess I am, when it comes to winter weather events, Rick Martin and his transportation team, and I'm sure you all agree, does just an amazing job in gathering all the available weather and road condition information to assist us in making the best possible decision on whether to go forward, whether the school day is normal, have a delayed start, or cancel school for the day. Now, this work begins well in advance of an actual storm event, but intensifies as the storm event nears. As I'm sure you'll hear many times tonight, we always want to make the call the night before, night before school, if at all possible. We realize the hardship on families and having to react in the morning to a cancellation or delayed start. We also want to make the call in the evening, evening, if at all possible, for the safety of our staff. For instance, we have nutrition, nutrition services staff loading trucks at 1:00 a.m. in the morning for early morning food deliveries to our schools. We want to keep them off the roads if there's, if any way possible. However, when a morning decision is necessary due to uncertain weather patterns, the information gathering to make that final decision happens in the middle of the night and in the early, early hours of the morning. And before I turn this over to Rick to provide a little more detail on the winter weather process, I will mention that the air quality process is similar in nature with Roy Anderson, our emergency manager, being the air quality version of Rick Martin. Roy will be providing information a little later in the presentation on regional emergencies, if you have any questions for him. But regarding the winter weather protocols, I will now turn this over to Rick Martin.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you again tonight, Superintendent McNeil, President Raymond, honored members of the board. It's my opportunity once again to talk to you about weather, which I love to talk about. So from that standpoint, obviously, the, the process, as Mr. Etchart said, starts well in advance. We often look at a week out or whatever, depending on the weather event and the projections that are coming. As time moves forward, as we get closer, if the event looks like it might be something that's going to last a few days, we start looking at it seventy-two hours out and start communicating that to the administration team and to my staff, that you better be on the ready, this is what's coming up, this is what we're looking at. Forty-eight hours in, we start communicating more frequently with texts and email messages, and those involve a lot of projections, timelines, scenarios involved with the weather service and a number of other situations that are coming up as far as what's going on in California as we're getting the, the weather coming in from that area, or even from northern, the north from Washington and Canada coming down that way. Once we hit the day, we start to, my day begins usually much earlier than this, but at four o'clock, it's, I'm living the dream, from about four, 4:00 p.m. to 4:30. I'm looking at every weather map I can find, looking at NDOT, looking at 511, which is the road conditions, I'm looking at NHP, what their road closures might be, the Nevada Highway Patrol, all of those types of things, and then again, looking at what's happening in the mountains. And then I'm communicating that periodically. So about six in the evening, I send out information to my team and say, be on the ready, you may be out on the road tonight, starting at 2:00 a.m. or 3:00 a.m., or whatever the conditions warrant. And then about seven or so, if conditions are looking pretty bad, I do let the administrative team know what's going on, but if, if it looks like those situations warrant, that we need to have that discussion about possibly canceling that night or making that decision that evening, we do talk about that, whether it would be a two-hour delay or an actual closure of the school based on projections, and what we're hearing from the weather services, or even if the weather is strong at that time, that we're getting a lot of snow or a lot of ice coming in. And then if that's not the case, another email or communication goes out at about 10 o'clock. This is where we're at, this is, I'm sending my team out, I let the administrative team know that, and I do the same for my staff. And then about two in the morning, that's when my staff starts rolling. They're out on the roads, they have five regions that they check, I have five of them out there, plus we're in conversation with the Washoe County Road crews, and then we're watching the city road crews, see what they're doing, and we're also looking at what's going on incline at Lake Tahoe, what weather patterns are coming in, do we have roads closed already going into California, or up north into 395 north, 80 west, or even 395 going south through the Washoe Valley. So a lot of things are playing at that point. And then about 3:00, once they're on the road, we're getting conditions, they're checking road temperatures, they're checking neighborhood areas. I'm using weather sites that not only are the weather service, but locally the Wunderground, which has neighborhood weather service information. So somebody may have a weather So, somebody may have a weather station set up in their backyard, so I can find out what might be going on in Cold Springs, or I might be able to find out what's going on in a neighborhood up by Collin Ranch, or I can find out what's going on on the hill on Galena, those types of things, and see what we're looking at. And even Reno proper and Sparks proper. And then at that point, start gathering all that data to start texting out to everybody that this is what's going on, this is what we have, and we're going to have to look at making some kind of decision. Preferably, we can make that decision a little bit before 30, so we can communicate if we have to and go from there. And just as a caveat to that, I also have a number of folks that I have befriended over the years, or they have befriended me, so to speak, with their concerns about the weather and the road conditions and making the call and the like. So, I have folks that are out in Antelope Valley, I have folks in Washoe Valley. I have a gentleman who drives a paper route in the morning for a number of different areas, where he delivers papers throughout the area. And I have an app with them that I'm communicating with them and saying, what are you seeing out there? What's going on in your area? And they're more than willing to help, and they're up with me at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. So, it's not just my team, it's not just looking at the experts, it's also the community helping us as well to make those kind of decisions in the morning. So, and at that point, yes, sir?
All right. Trustee Cottle?
Thank you, Madam President. So, how does this timeline and decision change if it's a storm that is impacting one area and having no impact elsewhere, like Cold Springs and North Valleys are getting dumped on and there's nothing happening anywhere else? How does that change the process and the timeline on making decisions on closures or delays?
Well, it does, it does have an effect because, you know, unfortunately, regionally, we have tried to do that in the past, but unfortunately, it's not a one-size-fits-all type of decision. Normally, what we do find consistently is that if we're getting hit in the North Valleys and like, and there have been strange anomalies out there, where it's just dropped on that area and then just hung there. And those have been days that we've had to make isolated decisions kind of for that region and for those schools. And fortunately for that area, it actually kind of fits well because all the feeder schools, the elementaries and everything, and the high schools and middle schools all kind of fit together even from a transportation standpoint. But that is rare, that that actually happens. Because what would happen there normally is we might have the North Valleys, but then we would also have the Northwest. Then we would also have particularly along the Sierra foothills area that runs all the way down into Galena. And surprisingly, you get a lot of precipitation, a lot of snow into the Washoe Valley area, a lot more than you would expect. Where we see the issue where we may not have much precipitation, much snow, much ice, would be in the Reno-Sparks proper area. But in determining that decision, we have to look at the safety for the district overall. And in making those decisions, you're thinking not only of buses going into their zoned regions, but teachers getting from, say, the North Valleys area, and they teach down in the South Meadows, or they teach down in Reno-Sparks proper, trying to get them there as well. And then students who have to travel cross-zone. So, you're talking students that might be going to Wooster IB, the International Baccalaureate Program, or AACT, that they're driving there themselves. And so, you want to take them into consideration about those timelines and getting them there in a safe and proper manner.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Add one thing really quick. I mean, in my tenure here, I think the hardest thing I've seen, the decisions being made, is when there's nothing on the roads at 4:00 a.m. And when we have this call at 4:00, 4:30 in the morning and the roads are completely dry, but the weathermen are promising that this big storm is on the way. And it really leaves you in that position where, what do you do? And we've made, you know, sometimes you use the best information available and you make the call, and sometimes it happens and sometimes it doesn't. And I think with that, we're going to turn this over to Irene to talk about the communications side of this.
Yep. Over to me. So, good evening, President Raymond, trustees, Superintendent McNeil. Irene Payne for the Record Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. So, when a decision is made, whether that is the evening before, which is best-case scenario, or early in the morning, what happens is I contact my team and it's all hands-on-deck approach because we have a lot of communication to get out to a lot of folks in a short space of time. So, what, the first thing we do is we draft a connected message, and you've heard that term "connected," and that's the automated phone system. So, we draft that script, making sure all the pertinent information is in there. Then I approve it, we get it translated, and then we get it recorded. And the next thing is we get it distributed to all our families and to all our staff members. So, you're talking around 70,000, 80,000 phone calls that we make. And obviously, as you said, it's translated. So, the message is distributed in English and Spanish. And some of our families and some of our staff members request the phone call, and you can also request an email and a text message. So, you have, our families and our staff have three options of how to receive that message. So, anyhow, that goes out. Simultaneously, as that is happening, we're starting to update the website, getting that information on the banner of the website. And then we start phoning the media. So, our media partners, like, they want a phone call or an email or a text message, depending on who's going to be in the newsroom and how they check the information coming in. That's usually around 12, 13 calls we have to make, so we start to go through that list. Sometimes it's challenging to track folks down, but we keep at it till we've spoken to someone at each of the key outlets. And then we monitor that to make sure they've got the information right and the correct information is being disseminated. Same time as all that is happening is we're starting to post on social media, get the information on social media. And then throughout the day, particularly in the morning, we're checking social media, answering questions, correcting misinformation, that kind of thing. And then the Welcome Center, we draft talking points for Irene in the Welcome Center so that when she gets the phone calls, she has a clear idea of what went into the decision-making process, what was anticipated, so that she can answer all those phone calls effectively and with correct information. And then we're done. And we, we just wait and see how the weather goes, and we hope the predictions hold true. And then we wait to get the feedback from our families and our community.
Next will be interruption of building operations.
All right. Thank you both, Rick and Irene, for the information on that.
And I'm staying for the duration.
Okay. You get to stick around.
I'll start it off. Good evening. My name's Adam Cersei, the Chief of Facilities for the school district. So, beyond these regional weather impacts that impact the district often more as a whole, we also have specific events that impact individual schools from a building operation standpoint. So, as you hear frequently from me at these types of meetings, we work very hard in the facilities department to work proactively, preventative maintenance, routine capital renewal investments, and really prioritizing those investments on the basis of need, really to ensure that before our building systems fail, that we are repairing and replacing them accordingly. However, events, unanticipated events, extreme failures do occur. Typically, they are relatively isolated in their impacts to a school. While they can be rather acute, our facilities department and our contractors are often able to repair them and minimize the impacts in a relatively short period of time, minimizing the impacts to the schools, to just a classroom or several classrooms, not really significantly interrupting the building activities. In fact, two such issues were actually on the consent agenda this evening. One at McQueen High School was a significant water, water leak stemming from an HVAC unit that failed. Significant amount of water, damaged multiple classrooms. But, you know, aside from the impact to those isolated classrooms, the school itself was able to operate normally without losing any time. Also, a significant unanticipated mechanical failure at Wooster High School. We make emergency maintenance actions and keep that school functioning as anticipated. So, these are more representative of the types of building operation issues that occur maybe several times a year across the district, but only very rarely have we seen them cause significant extended interruption to entire school facilities. Pete will share a little bit about a couple of examples of those.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the larger events do sometimes occur that cause interruptions to building operations, ranging from the small equipment fires to the broken water lines. In my tenure, the most significant event that has occurred was an internal water line break at Pine Middle School. This was discovered on December 26th, so the day after Christmas, by the site facility coordinator doing a holiday Arctic Alert inspection. This was a major flooding incident that involved a significant cleanup, abatement, and construction. And amazingly, through the coordinated effort of many, many people, the school was reopened one month later. These type of events require significant coordination between the board members, the district and school leadership, academics, communications, transportation, finance, risk management, our parents, obviously, our community partners, and you could go on and on. For instance, with Pine Middle School, constant communications went out to our parents with community meetings also being held at Smith Ridge Elementary School. The Boys and Girls Club stepped up to help us with a place for children to go while the school was closed. The Food Bank assisted us in providing meals to the students, and academics ultimately added time to the school day to make up for the lost academic time. So, those do occur. Now, thankfully, this event happened when students were out of school. However, when they occur when students are in school, this is where the emergency drills at our school are vital. Several years ago, when a fire sprinkler broke at Spanish Springs High School, initial reports thought that it may have been an explosive device, the students went to the football field where a parent reunification process took place. Now, school was thankfully able to resume as normal the following day. Now, these types of school closures, again, require coordination between many, many departments, community partners. But the key element, I think, of all of that is the communication process, which, again, we'll turn it over to Irene.
Thanks, Pete. So, if we have an acute event at a school, particularly like the two Pete's just mentioned, what will most likely happen is that we'll get an initial call from facilities. And then what we do is we start alerting people. So, we make sure the leadership team knows, other district internal audiences know, we let the Board of Trustees know. And then we'll start to work with the principal or school leadership on their messaging. So, in a situation like this, it's really very reassuring for our families if they hear from the principal. What they don't want to hear is from a nameless person from communications, they want to hear from the principal. So, what often we'll do is we'll actually go out to the location and work with the principal, help them write the connected, help them record the connected. I usually have two people out at a school like that, where we have an incident like that. So, one working with the principal, and then someone else actually handling the media. So, that's another big component of this, is letting the media know what's happening and then facilitating interviews. Once again, I would prefer the principal to talk about their school because who can talk more passionately about their kids, their school than a principal? So, we try to facilitate that. If that's not possible, then we'll quite often use someone else, possibly me, or possibly someone from facilities. But we do all that coordination in tandem with helping the principal take care of their communications. We'll help them with the website, make sure the website is updated, any social media, if the school has a social media site, we'll help them with that. If not, we'll post on the district site. Provide talking points for leadership and the trustees so that if you are asked what's going on, you have the information readily at hand to answer those questions. And then we'll work very closely with the school staff and facilities. If this is an event that is going to go on for a period of time, like Pete said, we might want to host community events, and then we would help with that. We might want to work with our partners out in the community if kids were supposed to be in school, you know, can our community partners help with that? So, that's the communication. Once again, it's, it's all hands-on-deck and it involves a lot of people so that we can effectively and quickly communicate with all of our different audiences.
Adam, do you want to just really quickly define what an Arctic Alert is and what the system is in place? Because I think that's important for the trustees and the public to know that there's a system in place for the Arctic Alerts and what those are.
Sure. Appreciate the opportunity to clarify that. Again, Adam Cersei, Chief of Facilities. Arctic Alert is just a term that we use in the maintenance and housekeeping departments of our team when evening temperatures are scheduled to drop below, significantly below freezing. I believe the threshold's typically under 20 degrees. But in certain schools, we have water lines that are maybe more at risk because of various insulation factors. But really, when certain facilities get cold overnight, we'll schedule staff to check, whether it's weekends, over holidays, and just make sure. There's also protocols that we set in place with our heating systems and opening cabinets underneath sinks, things like that, to help the warm air intrude in some of the cavities where various plumbing fixtures might be to avoid any burst pipes, things like that. We just term it an Arctic Alert. So, thank you for asking that question.
Thank you, Mr. Cersei.
Trustees, I'm Roy Anderson, I'm the Emergency Manager for the district. I'm going to discuss regional emergencies and the closure protocols around those. So, when we look at regional emergencies, annually, the Washoe County region goes through what they call a Threat and Hazard Identification Risk Assessment. And we take a look at what the various risks and threats are that face Washoe. For the, the threats that pose a danger to the community, and this isn't all-inclusive, there's about 13 items that are incidents that have been identified. But, you know, there are things like earthquake, flooding, of course, as we saw in Lemon Valley, hazardous materials that gets transported through our area quite often, and then also stored at different businesses around the area, severe storms, as we heard, and then, of course, wildfire that we've been dealing with, at least the smoke here lately. When we're looking at evacuations, and that's obviously if the school's in session, Pete had mentioned, you know, the need to evacuate because of the water line break or it'll sound like, you know, something exploded. There's also, obviously, earthquake with, you know, any time that a building becomes too dangerous to occupy. So, you know, if there is an earthquake, or even if it's very limited damage, we still want to make sure that the building is safe to occupy, so we would evacuate for that. And then obviously, if there's any kind of mass casualty incident, we would make sure that, you know, the building would be closed and go from there on that. We also have the potential activation of the emergency operations and what we run through as a district. So, there's actually various levels of activation on that. We have full activation, that's where we do have a designated District Emergency Operations Center, and that would be manned by the District Emergency Response Team that would help manage the incident. That group, that team will work with the Regional Emergency Operations Center to get, you know, resources that might be needed, information sharing that might need to be back and forth so we can make decisions on, on how we move forward as a district. We also have a virtual activation for medium to small incidents. And basically, that's how we've been running COVID now from the very inception. I mean, we started with virtual meetings, and basically, the district has been responding to COVID as if it, you know, or it is an actual incident. So, that's kind of how we've been working the COVID incident here. And then finally, there's a partial activation. And these things, you know, occur if, you know... And then finally, there's a partial activation, and these things, you know, occur if, you know, if they affect maybe one school, or if they're non-life-threatening incidents, we'll reactivate. And that could be informally with just, you know, my office, or working with, you know, transportation, for example. If there's, you know, something in the neighborhood and goes into code yellow, it would be a scenario where it would be more informal, but yet, we're still doing a partial activation of the EOC, of the district response. And of course, everything involves communication.
Thanks, Roy. So if we have a regional incident, there's different levels of communication depending on that incident. If it is a regional emergency and the regional EOC is set up, everyone on the communications team has some level of FEMA training around communications. So what that means is, we often provide a PIO to work on shifts to relieve the PIO of the county, and we've done that for a number of events over the last five or six years where I've had Charles Ron, who has done the night shift and has been the PIO through the night. So that is probably the extent of what we do. We will help them with their media communications, the regional EOC. If it's our EOC, the school district EOC, we have someone in, sitting on the EOC, that's either myself or the communications manager. If we need to deploy to a school because it's a school event, then that's usually me. And what I will do at that point is, I will position the media across the road away from the school, and I will handle the media, and what that means is, I'll give them whatever information, accurate information, that I've been told either by our emergency manager or school police, and I will share that with the media until I've got someone either from school police, or the emergency manager, or someone from the school, the principal. But in the meantime, I run that buffer. We also send out a connect ed if it's a school emergency within 15 minutes. So when we're told of an emergency at a school within 15 minutes, that connect ed goes out, and then another one goes out on the hour. And hopefully, by that point, the one that's on the hour, the principal can do that. But if not, we'll take care of that on behalf of the principal. We also have a ticker tape, and that's the best way I can describe it, on the website, where if we do have a code red or a serious event, we're constantly updating that information, possibly minute by minute when things are happening so quickly. And what we'll do on social media is, we'll direct people to the website, to the ticker tape, so they can see exactly what's happening as it happens. And then, of course, we will, before we possibly, or at the same time as doing any of that, we'll want to inform the leadership team, other leadership team members, and the Board of Trustees, and then obviously handle media calls all the way through that.
All right, don't see any questions up here. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
For the record, Victor Sherbandi, Executive Director in the Strategies Office. And to kick off the health closures protocol slide, Margaret and I are going to unpack the first box there on the left, which is the assessment portion of this. We currently receive information about COVID-19 cases in three different ways. And before we get into those three different ways, I think it's important to point out that the process that you're going to hear about from Margaret and I is not entirely new. And we have had a similar process in place for many years with other outbreaks such as noro, pertussis, and flu. I think that COVID-19, though, has put the process that we're going to articulate on a much bigger scale. So the first way that we receive information about COVID-19 cases, in the most common way, is from the Washoe County Health District. We are in communication with them daily now, and labs feed them results from tests throughout, around the clock, and they are analyzing that data from essentially 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM each day. And so even though they're receiving it even after 7:00 PM, they don't get to it until 7:00 AM the next morning. We also receive information from families who notify the district or Margaret's office of positive test results, or members of their family who may have been in close contact with someone who did test positive. And sometimes, this is the first indicator, and even the Washoe County Health District does not know about some of these situations. So when we do receive information from families, we immediately follow up with the Health District to verify and make sure that these cases are on their radar, so they're aware of them. And then we also have established a great partnership with Renown for employee testing. And Renown will immediately call Margaret or our employee health nurse if they discover a positive case. And they are often getting their lab results back in 24 hours, which is outstanding. And we are aware, I believe Margaret informed me, that we're aware of at least two positive employee cases that have been discovered through Renown testing. And so at this time, I would like to hand it off to Margaret Allen, who is our Director of Health Services, Student Health Services, and she will speak to you about all of the actions that we take once we learn about a positive case that affects our students or our staff.
Thank you, Victor. President Raymond, Superintendent McNeil, and trustees, thank you for allowing us to present tonight. As Victor said, the process that we use now is not new, it's just escalated with COVID. And so there's three different scenarios when the Health District will notify us. One is when a person is in our school district, either staff or student, and it says no attendance while infected. To us, that means this student was not in school, they might be on distance learning, and there's probably no action to take. And so the other two usually spur some action to us. A person attended while infectious, or an exposed individual has been identified. Those two items signify that we're going to have to do some work. So when we get those notifications, we start the ball rolling. I notify the principal and the area superintendent of what's going on. The Health District, at the same time, is asking for contact information, and so the area superintendent and the principal are starting to contact their teachers to say, we have something going on at your school, you might be expecting a call from the Health District. And so we do meet weekly with the Health District to review what's happened that week. There's sometimes, there's maybe a delay in communication that we need to talk about, or maybe, you know, there's a school that is potentially having more nausea and vomiting issues. And so we're in close contact with them. Once the Health District talks to the principal, they have a better idea of what's going on at the school. They will then say, I need, you know, to talk to your teachers. At the same time that I get a notification, there's a group of us that get notification from the Health District via a secure line, and that triggers a series of events. I'm contacting the principal, the area soup, somebody is getting them a line list, which means it's triggered by the name of the student, and, you know, all the associated students in that class, or maybe by the name of an employee. So there's constant going back and forth. There's about 20 investigators at the Health District that I know by name, sometimes there's new ones, and so they may have more than 20. They are, they know my number, they can call me at any time, and then I will respond. We, as Victor said, with our association with Renown, we're getting labs back in about 24 hours. They have a physician that calls directly to either the employee health nurse or to myself and says, I have a positive case, here's what it is. And so what we do, and we have identified those, as Victor said, through our employee health nurse program, by a staff member calling us and saying, I'm really not feeling well today, you know, I've had this GI thing, I think it's, you know, I ate something. And so we really have tried to educate people to wait two or three days, let's see what's going on with their symptoms. The Health District has said that they would like to see this 24 to 48-hour period because they get some false positives if we test too soon. And so we have identified staff members, and I do think that it's a tremendous service to the staff. The first weeks of going live with employee health, we had over 100 calls a day, and so there was three of us trying to make sure we contacted every employee. Sometimes we contacted them twice, so the first question we'd say, has somebody from our office called you? Anyway, once we're notified of a case, the contact tracers at the Health District start their investigation. The first person they call is either the student or the person that is positive or has been associated with a positive case. Like Victor said, there are times where the Health District does not know of a case that happened this weekend, and so I am calling them saying, you know, I have the results, I had a doctor call me. And so there may be a little bit of a delay in communication where they're waiting on the actual lab results, or wanting to talk to this physician before they call the employee. There are times also that they can't contact somebody, and so they're calling us saying, this is not a working number, can, you know, can you give us another number? Once that is, you know, they've made that initial contact, they might call us and say, you know, this class, the person I talked to really didn't give a good story, I need more time. And usually, you know, it could be 24 hours where they say, let's close this class so we can talk to more people involved, the teachers, could be other parents, it could be staff members. And so they could ask for anywhere from a couple of hours to 72 hours, just depending on the size of the investigation that they have to do. In middle school and high school where people move around more, the investigation's going to take longer. One of the things that we talked about this past week at our weekly meeting with the Health District was that they're not taking any new cases after 6 o'clock. They're going to work on cases that they have already identified. They know that we're available after 7:00 if there's an emergency, but they're really trying to not be disruptive to, you know, principals who are on call, teachers, and to the closure of classrooms. But they have really tried to work with us to get the information they need so that they're not excluding total classes. They're being very careful in, you know, making a class exclusion or class closure until their investigation is complete. And then, once their investigation is complete, they'll send an email, and they'll say, we have interviewed every contact here, there's nothing further to do, this case is closed. In the meantime, when we do have something positive, we've got a text group that says, check your emails, and so the people on that text message will go to their emails to get more information. We do work really hard to keep the name of the person confidential only on an as-needed basis, and so with that, we usually are working with communications to, you know, get information out to parents and to schools, especially when we're going to close a class or exclude for a period of time. Are there any questions before Irene talks about communication? Oh, Pete, I'm sorry, Pete.
Actually, I'm going to begin, Pete Etterich again, Chief Operating Officer, I'm going to begin the discussion tonight about staffing levels by going over kind of our operational levels, and then we'll talk about academics next. So the operational staffing is always an issue that we monitor closely, especially in times of emergencies. While not ideal by any means, some of our operational departments can change levels of service during staffing shortages, such as nutrition services can close a food line, or in custodial services where we know our current main focus must be on disinfection, and other items such as vacuuming, or grounds maintenance, et cetera, may need to be foregone so that disinfection can be prioritized. And custodial staff can also be temporarily reassigned to other schools when absolutely necessary to meet needs. However, other departments, such as transportation, do not have that same flexibility. We either transport a student or we do not. Now, the only available options we have available when driver numbers are not adequate are to split the pickups and drop-offs, which we are currently doing at some schools due to current state required bus occupancy restrictions, or have administrators drive buses, which we've been doing unfortunately for several years, or the last scenario we would ever do is that we just have to eliminate routes. And, you know, these are always incredibly hard decisions, and I know you've been involved with many decisions when it comes to transportation and walk zones and all that. These are always really difficult. So I think, you know, the number one item that I always bring up at every operation leadership team meeting is staffing. And so staffing is always an issue, it's an issue when the economy's good, it's an issue when we have issues like what we have going on today. So it's something we completely monitor, we, I try to keep in contact with the superintendent on these issues, and it's just a constant battle, and we know that, and we work hard to keep our staffing levels as high as we can. And I just got to give a shout out to Emily and the entire HR department. The job fairs they produced last year were just amazing as far as bringing people into our district, and we continue to try to do that. And with that, I'll turn this over to the academic team.
Shall I just go over the communications for Health?
I think that would be good, so we can just review the COVID, the process for contacting.
Okay.
Thank you.
So as Margaret said, this is not new. We've been dealing with, you know, student illnesses for goodness knows how long, and quite a number of years ago, it dawned on us that why are we rewriting every piece of communication for a principal or for school-based staff? So we developed what we call a principal's toolbox that has draft, everything you need, draft connected to students, to families, letters to families, that you can take, you can, the templates, you can just slot in the information you need. So what we've been doing over a number of years is, when we're informed by Student Health Services or the Health District that we have an issue, we immediately direct the principal to the toolbox. And actually, I would say now that our principals just know that that's where they go for all their communications. And then, of course, we want to alert leadership team if they don't already know, and they most likely do, and obviously, the superintendent would do. But make sure everybody who needs to know, knows, and that includes the Board of Trustees. And then we start to look at social media and the website if that is appropriate, and of course, let the media know and deal with media inquiries and provide information. What we do with health closures, that's just a little bit different, is that we're very keen on working with Student Health Services and/or the Health District in terms of our messaging. So if there's any way the School District can work with the Health District to have a combined messaging to the community, that's a more effective way of letting our community know what's going on. And then we would obviously work with school police, and the emergency manager if that was warranted. But we felt like we did a lot of health-related communications a few years back, nothing compared to what we're doing at the moment, so it's interesting times for sure.
Thank you, Irene.
Thanks, Irene. Deborah Byersdorf, Deputy Superintendent, I'm going to start off, and I'm joined by Emily Ellison, our Chief HR Officer, and also Joe Ern. Emily Ellison, our Chief HR Officer, and also Joe Ernst, one of our co-lead area superintendents. So we're going to bring you back over to the operational considerations. And in your packet, you had what we call a decision matrix, which is a step-by-step flowchart of sorts that will lead our principals and our area superintendents through very specific sets or steps of information in order to make a recommendation that we may need to close a school building and move to distance learning if there's a shortage of staff attributed to exclusions.
I was just going to ask if, JJ, would you mind putting that matrix up behind us so everyone can see it? Sorry, go ahead, Debbie.
Sure, absolutely. So Emily and Kate Schum, who works with Emily, who we've, we've gotten to work with very closely over the course of this school year, and then myself and the area superintendents have spent quite a bit of time putting this document together. We've used it a couple of times, kind of a soft launch, I think, with maybe one of our schools in the first week. And the hope is that we wouldn't have to use it too often, but we wanted to be prepared, again, to make the very best recommendation to the superintendent about potentially looking to close a school due to a shortage of staffing, knowing that our number one priority is safety and security of our students and our staff in our schools. So I think I'm turning it over maybe to, to Joe? Okay.
Good evening, trustees, Superintendent McNeil, good to be here again, Joe Ernst, Area Superintendent. And when you take a look at the decision matrix, as Debbie talked about, it begins with a high degree of monitoring around the overall subs that are in our system. Both human resources is looking at that, and then principals are looking at that, trying to be aware of any increased absences within the building. So that's a continual monitoring. When we get to the exclusion level, we really work with principals carefully to identify how many staff are out. So you can see number one and two there. It's really looking at how many certified staff are out, how many classified staff are out, and that also includes a look at unfilled positions. As we know with each of our learning models, we have extended the reach of the educators in the building. And so the first thing we need to do is really assess how many certified and classified staff are out. After that, we really look at what is needed to remain, to cover the classes, the number of staff needed that we'll need, need to make sure that all students have a teacher and that all students are accounted for within a day. We also look at, are there areas in the building that we might be able to temporarily close down in order to make sure that we have any shortage addressed? After doing that, then we really kind of take a good look at, depending on how many staff are in the building, that's when, if there's a high degree of staff in the building, that we really work closely with human resources. And we, we begin to mobilize at a district level to support the school. So we first start very school-specific, staff that are at the school rearranging in purposeful ways, and if it gets beyond that, then we work with human resources to mobilize at that district level.
So, good evening, Emily Ellison, Chief Human Resources Officer. As Joe mentioned, my department is providing supports for this process in a couple of ways, and we really have to think about staffing, not only from the certified perspective, but the non-certified, because as we looked to think about thresholds for closing or what sorts of indicators, as you know, every school in our building is very, very different, and they're all staffed in very different ways, and so from one elementary to the next, you know, while we have some, we have allocation models that we utilize. Oh, I'm sorry. While we have allocation models that we utilize, of course, schools have different funding sources, which sometimes adds to staff, and so there's, there's not really a formulaic way to approach this because we need to look at each school and its unique circumstances. And so we are monitoring proactively on the certified side of the house, so those are our teachers, our classroom teachers, through the Aesop system. So that's the system that we utilize to dispatch guest teachers to cover for educators who are going to be out. And for each school, we have an indicator of how much ancillary staff they have that might be able to be pulled in, in the event that there are unfilled absences. And so that's kind of our first warning system, if you will, that we might need to ramp up staffing supports for the next day if we start to see numbers ticking up at an individual school or unfilled positions picking up at an individual school. So when we get to the, to the responsive part of this flowchart, you'll see item seven is that human resources begin staff mobilization. And we've developed two, two different support mechanisms for this. So the first is the certified listing. We have a number of staff in our departments throughout the district that are not assigned to school sites or classrooms, but who are licensed personnel, so everything from substitutes to full licensure. And so we've worked with all of the leadership team members in the district to prioritize the way in which those staff members would be dispatched to schools in order, or deployed to schools in order to provide supports for uncovered classrooms. And then we also have a non-certified listing, same system, tiers one, two, and three, that we can, we can tap into in order to provide coverage for other areas of school that may be critical for coverage. So if we need supports in the clinic, or the office, or the kitchen, or custodial staff, we've got other district staff that we can deploy. And so Debbie mentioned that we've had a soft launch since we started to develop this, and knock on wood, so far it's working really well. I know that I've had two staff members that I've deployed to help with office coverage, and I believe several members of the Office of Academics have also gone out, and so we're, of course, kind of tweaking as we go. But for right now, I feel like we're in a pretty good position to be able to have some monitoring systems in place and then have some plans for responsiveness in place as well.
So I'll just kind of end this portion of the closures related to health concerns. When we say "all hands on deck," we've heard that several times this evening, it absolutely means that, everything we can do to keep a school building open for our students, and that takes the teamwork of people at the district level as well. I know our superintendent is on that list to come in and to sub, I think just about everybody in the room in front of you is on that list as well, in one capacity or another, because we know how important it is to keep our buildings open for, for our kids. So that concludes our presentation on why we sometimes have to close our school buildings, and I think the team's all behind us here in case you have any, any questions for us.
All right, well, thank you all very much, everybody. Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thanks to all of you staff that are here and working hard in this crazy situation that we're in. You know, we heard a lot from the, from the teachers earlier about how hard they're working, and I certainly believe that to be so. But I also know you guys are working really hard as well to be here in this, like I said, in this crazy place. And you're here, you hear some of, some of the frustration from the teachers in, in that it seems that sometimes, do we have time sometimes when, when they need some help and we can't get it to them? Because it seems like that's part of what we're hearing, is that they, they can't get help sometime. Do we run out? Do we kind of give us an idea of what's, where that is?
I'll, I'll start with that, Trustee Taylor, so.
And let me say this.
Yep, sorry.
I know everybody's working hard, so please don't think, I absolutely know that.
Emily mentioned the support from our Office of Academics, so I'll use that as an example, and maybe I'll, I'll specifically talk about our, our elementary teachers on special assignments, our folks that work out of our elementary curriculum and instruction department. So teachers that may be struggling with, with the use of teams, or, again, we adopted a new K5 English Language Arts program curriculum last year, Benchmark Advanced, we, people are still learning how to use that, and those folks deploy out, they'll do it both virtually, they'll go, they'll go sit socially distanced, side by side with a principal, with, with a grade-level group of teachers during their professional learning time, their PLC time, and work through those snags or the, the things that are proving to be difficult. We, any, and maybe Joe, you can jump in here as well as an area superintendent, if Joe has a, a principal or a teacher that's not understanding something or struggling perhaps with something or isn't sure about something, it's quick, quick deployment to help, absolutely. And I'll say before I turn it over to Joe, you know, it's, it's lean over in the Office of Academics as well. Boy, I wish we had a 21st Century Learning Division twice the size right now, especially given what we're, what we're, we're going through right now. But folks that are very, very responsive, answering questions at all times, working with teachers, and then trying to build the capacity at a site so teachers are helping and principals are helping teachers as well. We're under no illusion that it's easy work, we, we know it's very difficult what we're, we're asking our teachers and our principals to do right now. So Joe, if you have anything you might want to add?
I think, Dr., is it on? Yeah, okay, can you hear me? All right. Dr. Taylor, I think some of what you're hearing reflected in the feedback too, particularly from the secondary level, is a, is a bit of a balancing process that we're going through right now, right? As students are transitioning into and out of distance learning, this is certainly not my wheelhouse, but I can speak enough to convey the message. Spanish Springs High School is a great example of a school where they've had to build out a bunch of additional sections in response to student enrollment, and our allocation process is catching up to that a bit. And so I know there are some prep buyouts that are happening to make sure that the sections are offered while we true up allocations. So a little bit, and I've shared with, with Natha and Tom of WEA as well, there's a little bit of noise in the system right now that I think is a little bit of the dust settling that should start to settle over the next couple of weeks as we move through the allocations and overage process. But as you mentioned, you know, our efforts around recruiting are continuous, and so our acute sensitivity to the need for guest teachers and to having an adequate supply of those is, that's something definitely forefront. I think, at least when I'm looking at the data right now, there's a little bit more noise in the system than normal, and I think some of that'll settle, settle down over the next couple of weeks.
I also think that it's about early communication in the process. The earlier that we recognize the need, the, the more efficiently we can fill that need. Margaret talked about some of the health department timelines and some of the, some of the, the challenges that that can present as far as that notification maybe coming a little bit later in an evening or maybe early morning hours, and then being able to mobilize folks quickly in those circumstances. And I also think there is an educate, an educational process that's taking place. Principals are becoming more fluent in understanding how to access area superintendents and the steps within this process. In some circumstances, we've actually had substitute administrators. And so now a substitute administrator moving into a principal position and working through some, some of the, the challenges in terms of mobilizing people there. And so there's a number of factors, I think, that have worked together in some situations, but I do think we're getting better and better with each situation in terms of the ability to mobilize quickly, effectively, and support at the levels that are needed at the schools.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I mean, it's, we've never been here before, so it's, it's kind of figuring it out as we go, and really, your efforts, I really appreciate it, really very much so. Thank you, Madam President.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. You all are just doing amazing work. Emily, your team, I know, just incredible work, and ours that are beyond what any of us could imagine. I know for some of the teachers and counseling staff and others, you know, I just want to make sure everybody realizes, we know this is not optimal by any way, shape, or form. We know that we've got people who are teaching a subject that they're not even very familiar with, and that's, that's hard on everybody. We know it's hard on the students, we know it's hard on the families, and we sure know it's hard on the staff. And I just want to, I know we all feel the same gratitude for everybody that is so far out of their comfort zone trying to make this work. So I, I just, we do know that it's painful, we do see it, we do feel it, and there, there really aren't solutions, the people just aren't out there. We don't have the staff in every single subject matter, AP Chemistry at every school, we just don't have them. And so we're doing the best we can, but a lot of people are working really hard to make it as good as we can, and, and you all are, are at the forefront of that. I hope we can get to a place where we're able to have that quality of educational delivery that our, our students deserve, but in these conditions, it's not going to be for a while. So we're just grateful to everybody for trying to make it work, and we recognize it's not optimal and it's, it's still painful.
All right, I know we have public comment, but. Public comment, JJ?
Malia Pakta, Natha Anderson, Pablo Nava Duran. We also received emails from Richard Lubkey and Carmela Thomas.
I just want to say that, you know, I've gotten a lot of communication from the district. I've gotten a couple of calls and/or emails and/or text messages, because I signed up for everything, that said that there were a couple of positive cases that had been identified at my kids' schools, and I appreciated getting the call that said, "This happened, your student was not exposed." So that was, that was a great relief, and I appreciate that. I've been, my, my kids have been in the district for, this is our sixth year, and I think in all that time, there's only been two times where I kind of felt like the communication wasn't done right. Last year or the year before, there was, there was snow. I live in Spanish Springs. I had over 12 inches in my backyard at 4:30 when I woke up, so I know that the North Valleys and anybody else that had much higher elevation had more than that, and it, school didn't get canceled, there was no snow day called. I thought that was a miss. Last Friday, last Friday, I don't, days are all running together, I don't know, when the 6:30 call came for the smoke cancellation, I appreciated that you were being so diligent and, and taking into consideration the health of my children, but I felt like it was very last minute. And so I, I know 5:30 is hard for a lot of people, everybody would like to know sooner than, than later, but you know, as far as the weather goes, the weatherman can't even get that right. Like, it's not an exact science, they have predictions and they have models. So I appreciate that you do what you do and you try your best. I did like, a, a couple of years ago when we had the smaller districts, I liked that because in Spanish Springs, we don't necessarily get the same kind of snow as you do in the North Valleys or down in, in Verdai or, or in Galena because we're at a lower elevation. We don't live in the plains, we live in the mountains. And so I think that that's a conversation worth reintroducing and, and seeing if there's some way that we can better do that kind of a system. It's not a one-size-fits-all. And I know that with that, there were a lot of teachers that complained because maybe their student's school, their children's school where they were students that got closed, but the teachers who were also parents were teaching in a different school the day. We all have to make decisions based on what's best for our kids and for ourselves, and that's part of being an adult. And I appreciate that there are kids that have to drive themselves to whatever special programs are at different schools, but I, I just wanted to thank you, you guys don't get enough attaboys. This is one.
Thank you, Ms. Pakta.
Natha Anderson, Pablo Nava Duran. NATHA Anderson, Pablo Nava Duran.
Good evening. NATHA Anderson on behalf of WEA. I'm not going to rehash everything. There are some items that I just wanted to bring up. The first has to do with the COVID tracing. There are some discrepancies about how our staff is notified. Our communications team is doing a great job of getting information out. But some of our staff members are actually not told. I don't know if that's because there's a breakdown between how the principal is supposed to let a teacher know or a custodian know or how that exactly works out. So, it'd be great to have that a little bit better clarified for our staff members. I brought this up to Emily last week. I think it was last week. It might have been last year. Can't remember. Time starts to run together, as we all know. And one thing that we found out that I didn't know about is that when something comes to, like a private doctor will know that somebody has COVID-19, but the Health Department doesn't. So, getting that information out to our staff would be a huge help in clarifying some of the questions that some people have had. So, we've started doing that with our members when they contact us. But the biggie really is, how do we tell staff members when something's happened? We have to be able to find a balance between protecting the rights of the privacy, but then also making sure that it's a safe environment for the people that work, that are there. Because as a union leader, that's one of the big things for us, is safety. So, how do we make sure that it's safe? The second item I wanted to bring up, because again, it was a wonderful presentation, is how we're able to find a balance as educators. In particular, when it comes to the earlier comment made about that there are basically three different schools. There's one that's in-person. There's one that's hybrid. And there's one that is online or distance learning. Some of our educators are doing all three items. And they're being asked to do this more and more and more. And so I appreciated what Emily brought up earlier about how we think some things will settle soon. But quite frankly, that need for rebalance has to happen sooner rather than later. I'm looking at some of the educators. They have to put in their failure notices next week. When you're looking at 300 students, which some of our distance learners are looking at, how do you make sure that those grades are accurate? Number one. But number two, one of our expectations is that we also contact the parents one-to-one, whether that is through email or through phone calls, or at least that's what I was always taught. You still need to try to contact that parent. So, that way, the failure notice is not the first call or first notice that somebody's in jeopardy of failing. How can you do that with the possibility of so many students? And I think that earlier today, one of our educators actually talked about that. So, I just wanted to bring those items up. In closing, however, I also want to point out our principals are doing a phenomenal job of trying to keep as many things down to how do we help our kids as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Pablo Nava Duran.
Okay. So, I like the graph you made. So, I know that many teachers, many teachers are being short-staffed. And we need to, I know you guys, you guys hire for the teacher to work. And I'm on the point, so I'm available. So, I got a bachelor's degree from management and marketing. If you guys any offer jobs, any grip tips? So, okay, so that's a good graph. So, if it doesn't have enough staff, that means the student will have to pack overcrowded. And we have a larger class sizes. We'll get COVID-19s. So, it's a better way to shut down the school if there are no staff. And there was a high improve for COVID-19s. I told the government of vaccines, and we got enough hired for staffing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nava Duran.
That's all I have for this item.
Thank you. All right. Is there any further questions or discussion on this item? Well, I will quickly, before I pass it over to Superintendent McNeil, thank you all again. I know many of you were up early helping to make the decision about the smoke. I absolutely echo my fellow trustees' compliments of all of your hard work. We do know that while this last three, four weeks have been especially challenging for our teachers, we know that it has been equally as challenging for you. And we know how hard you've been working to try to find ways to get that support to our teachers and make sure that it can be as successful here as possible. So, thank you all, and we'll continue to work to do that. Superintendent McNeil.
I just want to echo all of the thanks. This team, I've said it numerous, numerous times. They have put their hearts and souls into helping and supporting our schools. And they know that, one of my very first things that I always say is that support for our schools, that's the direct support for our schools. But, you know, HR, emergency management, Margaret and her team, you know, we have Margaret on-call every weekend and every night. We've got communications on-call on the weekends. We have area superintendents on-call. We have Emily and her staff on-call. We have deputy superintendent on-call. Deputy superintendents on-call 24/7, just like the superintendent. But it's just an amazing, amazing team. We've got a lot of work to do, but we're going to get there. And I said that to NATHA today. We are going to get there. It's going to be hard work, and we're going to have to make some difficult decisions. But I know that we're going to get there because that's just who we are. And we're here for children, and that's our first, and that's our mission. So, you all have had a very, very long day, and so I am directing you to go home.
Thank you all. Drive safely. As they transition out, I will invite our Chief General Counsel up for Agenda Item 4.04, Discussion on Possible Action to Fill the Remaining Term of Former Trustee Scott Kelly, trustee seat District A, including affirming the September 22nd, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Board of Trustees as the appointment date, the adoption of a process for the appointment, including application process, potential questions and application deadline, as well as appointment process at September 22nd, at the September 22nd, 2020 Meeting, including narrowing the candidate's potential interviews and/or candidate statements. This is for possible action. And I will let Neil kick us off. We're going to, I think, sort of do this one together.
Yeah. I don't know. What do you say? Good night if I say, I don't know. Anyway, President Raymond, trustee, Superintendent McNeil. So, NRS governs the appointment of a trustee. Super, or, excuse me, President Raymond and I spoke last week about how quick she wanted this to go. Her desire was it for this to move quickly because basically, even when we appoint the person, if the board chooses to do it next board meeting, there will only be five meetings left. The law requires that we do a two-week notice period. My office took the liberty of presuming that you're going to vote to affirm the September 22nd date. If you don't, that'll push back our timeline past the September 22nd date. But in taking that liberty, we've already started the noticing process. We put a notice in the paper on Friday. We also put a notice on Monday, only because our concern was Labor Day. We went ahead and kind of double-noticed it. And then we have to do one this week. And then that will allow us to meet the notice requirements. So, the game plan is laid out in the memo that I provided you on August 31st. That was attached, that was attached to this board item. So, quickly, on September 4th, we did a notice. September 7th, we did a subsequent notice. We're having this board meeting today. We're going to look to adopt the process for the appointment. We have a list of five questions that we are seeking answers to. On September 10th, we'll put a notice in the paper inviting potential applicants. That notice will copy the notice that I wrote for the last time we did this. September 14th will be the second notice that's required under law. September 15th, all the applicants will have to have their applications in. September 17th, the names will be placed on the agenda for the September 22nd meeting. At September 22nd, the board will then vote to select a person for C-Day. And then on that, I think really, actually, I don't see why we can't on that day and at that time, we could swear the person in and they could sit for the meeting. So, that's the game plan that our office has set out in consult with President Raymond. Some of the things that we're going to ask for action on, and I think the best way to handle this, unless you disagree, President Raymond, and I will defer to you if you do, is we just can go point by point. So, first, the first motion that we would be asking for, and I guess we need to see if there's public comment, but the first motion is, well, let me go through the topics quickly, and then we can do point by point. Approve the dates for the appointment process. Determine what qualifications we're looking for. There are some set out in law. Decide on the application process. Do we want a letter of intent that answers some specific questions or just a letter of intent and a resume, for example? We can go into more details on that. Decide on the process for narrowing down the candidate pool. I'm presuming we're going to get more than three applications. I don't think we can take, you know, well, it's up to you. But in my mind, it would be if, let's say, you got 10, you would have all 10 names on the agenda. You'd vote down to interview three of them and then have an interview process for those final three candidates. I know that trustee Simon Holland participated in this process. It's a long process. It's going to be a long meeting. And we already are having long meetings. So, I just would encourage you to shrink down your candidate pool, but that's up to you. And then finally, and then finally decide on what the interview process will look like. So, I would suggest, before we go through the agenda points and start looking for motions, that perhaps we just do public comment now so we can get that done.
Okay. That works for me, Neil. Thank you. I'll just quickly state that in working with Neil on this, I was not on the board when we did the previous appointments. I know Vice President Taylor was appointed and was then part of the process of appointing two, three trustees. Trustee Simon Holland and I were both candidates at the time and kind of witnessed the process both as witnesses and as a candidate. So, we've had that perspective. I think that there is a way to get through this tonight. You know, as Chief General Counsel Rombardo stated, that, you know, this is a somewhat unique situation. While we've done appointments before, this is not an incredibly lengthy appointment. And so I think we can get through it pretty quickly and get through those decision points. We'll, you know, discuss each one, but I think, I hope that we can do it expeditiously. So, I will now turn it over for public comment.
Thank you, love. Pablo leave? Pablo left. So, we received emails from James Benton, Roger Edwards, Lori Agnew, Barbara Kirk, Darla Lee, Bev Steinem, Judy and Jim Covert, Sharon Graham, Vicky and Bill Holbrook, Jim and Diane Johnson, Cindy Sassinrath, and Wayne VanderWaal. That's all I have.
Thank you, JJ. Back to you.
Okay. Thank you. And I failed to mention, I probably should have, to your point, President Raymond, is that the process that we used in the past to appoint folks to fill vacant seats would have taken us down to, we probably would, this person probably would have sat for two meetings, maybe three, depending on if our office started it without coming to board approval. But if we followed the traditional path on how we've done it the last three times that I've been here, this person would have sat for literally two meetings. And so we can't, it seems to me, it would be illogical to have that process. So, this is a sped-up process. And that's in consult with you, and that's what you were looking for, so that's why we're here. So, the first thing that we're looking for is, we would like to have, and when I say "we," I think I'm speaking for President Raymond and myself as the person who's kind of driving this, is we would like to have a motion to approve the appointment date of September 22nd and the September 15th date to have all the applications in. And, you know, frankly, people have already been noticed. I'm sure they've started the process of resumes and letter-writing, letters of intent. I know that we've received emails supporting candidates. So, this isn't going to catch anyone off-guard. One week is really all we have time for because we have to get it on the agenda on Thursday. At this point, we're going to get it, these names, on Tuesday at 5:00. I'm going to have to get them to JJ by Wednesday morning so that they can get on the Thursday morning agenda. So, this is already a tight timeline if we want to make that September 22nd date. So, we would like to have a motion to affirm that part of the process as far as dates go.
Vice President Taylor.
I have a question, if I may beforehand. So, you're asking two questions, actually. You're asking counsel for a motion to approve the September 22nd date period, right? At this point.
Sure. Or we could do both the September 15th and September 22nd date. But basically, if, really frankly, if you adopt the 22nd date, the applications have to close on the 15th, or we can't make the agenda. It's going to be a violation of the open meeting law. So, really, if you adopt the September 22nd date, you're adopting everything that I've laid out for you.
The only question that I have is, and from a process standpoint, so the way you've envisioned, the way you've laid it out, is the applications are due on the 15th, and they're all put in for the agenda on the 22nd. And at the, on the 22nd, do we narrow them down? Let's say we get 10 people. I don't know.
Yep.
We narrow them down in the public meeting, right? Our meeting on the 22nd, right? And then we also have the public interview process or whatever.
Right. Those are decision points that we were going to bring up. But yes, that would be the game plan. So, what's envisioned is on the September 22nd, let's say we just get 10 to make it easy. We get 10 folks. You're going to receive them ahead of time. The public's going to receive them ahead of time. I believe the president's going to desire that you each show up with two or three that you like at the top. Let's say three, just to make it easier. Let's pick numbers. You come in with your three. Somehow, we get you all to vote and agree on, these are the three we're going to interview. Hopefully, you all agree when you walk in, but that's probably not going to happen, let's be honest. But we'll figure it out. We'll get three folks. Those three folks' name, so we'll have two items. One is to narrow it down. The second item is to interview and vote and select a trustee. And then, so when those three folks walk in, you do them one at a time, interview them, and then you vote on which one you want to appoint. That's the game. That would be how, I'm sure there'll be more details, but that's the skeleton.
That's the overview. Okay. Thank you.
My recommendation for that kind of narrowing down, I've served on scholarship committees. That was the only frame of reference I had. And you kind of, you know, you've got to narrow it down to a certain amount. If everyone came in with a top five or a top three, and then you kind of look at those in a ranked order, so you've got your ranked picks, then we can take that ranking, apply it to the full pool, and get to a top three that would be for interview at that meeting. That would be the first step in the process on the 22nd. Those top three would then take part in the interview process. And we'd look at the questions tonight, decide ahead of time what those would be. And then, as Neil stated, I suppose potentially, they could be sworn in right then and there once we made a decision. But we'd be making the decision that night. Yep.
Just a couple of things. One is, I would suggest that we don't say, let's narrow it to three.
Okay.
Just because there may be a natural break somewhere that might be, everybody, say, two people gets everybody's votes, and everyone, the rest are all spread out. We don't want to have to do a third. And then the same might be true if there's a four. Maybe we could say approximately three or something. But there's usually a natural break somewhere. And that gives us the ability to land at wherever that natural break is. The other question I would have is, in terms of the sample questions sent out from before, those are the recommended questions that would go out with the application?
No. The sample questions that were attached, there are seven. Unless they didn't make it, there were seven. it, there were seven.
Yeah, no, I saw them.
There are seven interview questions.
Oh, so for interview questions, I see.
Yeah, but I'm not suggesting that we use those. I just gave them to you for your edification. Personally, I don't think you should use those. That process was a huge process that went on for weeks. That's what that information is. You have, you're trying to get somebody in here, you know, we're doing this quick. I don't, if you have, let's say we pick, let's say the national break is at 5:00 and you have seven questions, one from each trustee for five candidates, and you're going to give them, I don't know, 30, 45 minutes to answer? I just, it seems to me that this is a position for five. I get that trust, that District A is important. I'm not suggesting it's not, but this has got to be a sped, this is a sped up process and I think, and I would also point out, I'm not sure those questions are still applicable, frankly. Those questions had a lot of stuff about superintendent board relationships. This person can be here for five meetings, how are they going to have a superintendent board relationship? I just, I questioned the applicability of them, but it's all we have and I wanted to give you guys everything I had. And so, and I wrote those with the chief of staff.
Sorry. Vice President Taylor, you may be speaking about that in the past, there were questions that the applicants had to answer, kind of as part of the application, I guess. And as one of our decision points, we could either go with a separate set of four or five questions plus a resume and a letter of intent for each applicant to submit. I was sort of looking at a suggestion of asking the candidates to answer two to three questions in their letter of intent and have a resume, but not a separate document of four questions being answered. That was coming up on decision point three, but I can go through that now if that's helpful for you to.
Oh, no, that's, I was just, I was wondering that piece.
In terms of the interview questions, we have them included, but I do think as part of the supplemental materials, we'll have to adjust that. I think, in my mind, that was probably the process that might take us the most time this evening, is just making sure that we each would go into the meeting on the 22nd with one interview question to ask each candidate. It could be an expansion of one of the questions we would ask in the letter or application process, or it could be one of the applicable ones from a previous time, or something maybe related to our current COVID situation, or, you know.
Yeah, that, I'm sorry, I want to make, I wasn't, I would, I just wanted to, I was asking for some clarity. I didn't necessarily, I mean, I've done it, I was appointed, so obviously I'm most familiar with that process. I thought I'd appointed two or three, but if Neil's been here for three, I was here before him, so if he's done three, I've done three, so. I'm just going back from that memory, are we sending questions with them? Yes, that's something we would do, and so on, so I'm good. I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't advocating one way or the other, I just want to clarify.
I might have misspoke, I might have only done two. Barbara McClory, Nick Smith, and I feel like Diane Nicolet, Ryan Gonda.
I think it was just Diane and Ryan.
Okay, yeah, I misspoke.
Okay, that's okay. Either way it goes, I'm fine. I just want a clarity on what motion you're asking for.
I'm sorry.
And what it entails. That's okay, I'm good, I'm good. Thank you.
So the motion that I think, if we follow the outline that the President Raymond asked of me to present, is just an approval date that we want to go forward on September 22nd. And then, what, again, as I read through them, we would, she asked that I try, that I chunked these. So again, approve the dates, determine the qualifications, decide on the application process, decide on the process for narrowing the candidate pool, and then decide on the interview process. So it was our intent in working together that we would have a motion on each one of those to try to keep this more streamlined. So does the board, I mean, it's up to you, President Raymond, but if you want a motion, you get to call for a motion, and I know that's how we discussed we were going to do it.
If, oh, trustee Cottle.
I just had a, thank you, I just had a quick question, just clarifying. Between what we're talking about, 5:00 PM on that Tuesday and Wednesday when the agenda's made, we're going to verify that the applicants meet the NRS requirements to hold the seat before their names go on the agenda?
No, but I don't know if I can get that done in time, but I'll be able to withdraw them afterwards and let you.
Okay. So it's just easier, put them all on the agenda and then we can just eliminate at some point then, but they're on the agenda just so we can get it out?
Yep, and the notice is very clear, if you don't meet it, you shouldn't apply, and if you do apply and you don't meet it, they're not going to consider you.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Trustee Simon Holland.
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve the September 22nd date for the appointment of the replacement trustee for District A.
Okay. Motion by trustee Simon Holland, second by Vice President Taylor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
The next question that President Raymond asked that we discussed is the determination of the qualifications. NRS 386.240, to trustee Cottle's point, lays out that a person to be appointed to trustee must be 18, basically, it says an electorate, but 18, and must live in the district. We will vet that situation as I just answered. The question was, do we want other qualifications on there to be mandatory? In discussing it, that's all the law requires. We don't think it's necessary to put more than that in your qualifications. If you want, and I agree with President Raymond on that, or we agree, so if you want to add more, we can. In my mind, it would just be part of your weeding out process. Let, again, this is a quick thing, let everyone apply. I can't imagine you're going to get too many for five meetings, but maybe you'll get dozens, I don't know. But you, as, when you narrow things out, if you see people who don't meet qualifications that you want, you get to come in here and say, no, I'm not going to vote for that person. So our thoughts were that we would just keep it to what the law says under NRS 386.240, and then you would be able to make those qualification determinations at the meeting on the 22nd when you narrow down the field. That was our thoughts, so.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I think there, we do owe some discussion of things that might disqualify people. Previously, when I applied as an applicant to be appointed, the trustees did not tell people that they were not going to appoint someone who was running for office. And so those of us who would not have applied wasted a bunch of time putting together an application and resume and so, and personally, I feel like we should not consider people who are running for office because I think that we need to let the voters decide that. I also think that it's worth discussing how we will, how we will deal with employees who may wish to apply, teachers or other staff members. I think previously, the discussion, the guidance from counsel has been that somebody could not serve on the board if they were currently an employee, but would someone be eligible to take a leave of absence for those few months? No, okay.
No, they'd be conflicted.
But we need to make that kind of thing clear because.
What I would propose, instead of making the notice that big, is if an employee applies because we had this circumstance in the past, we contact them and tell them, you have to resign your position, and they said, no, we prefer not to. I, you know, because we have to put this in the paper and you're paying per word, so if we get.
I still think we need to let people know that somehow. If they're not going to be able to be considered, people put a lot of effort and heart into an application if they care and if there's a way to, just in parentheses, current candidates for school board trustee will not be considered and current employees cannot serve while they are employed by the district, period. Something like that. I'm just throwing it out for other considerations if anybody else feels the same way.
If I may, Madam President.
Vice President Taylor.
I would agree with that because we know legally, an employee can't serve and that would eliminate that work. These applications take a lot of work and we want them to, we want them to, excuse me, we want them to know that ahead of time. I think that's just fair on either of those and maybe just make it as tight. I know it costs us a few more words, but I think that's fair to any employee. And if they have an interest, then they can call and say, what if I'd like to take a leave and deal with on an individual? I don't think we need to put that in there, but that can be dealt with on an individual basis. I think that's best just to be as open as we can going in.
I would just agree that I'm not, as one trustee, would not be putting in my top current candidate for school board. I think I'd rather see individuals that are not going to be on the ballot in November for school board, appointed to this position. So if there is a way to make it clear upfront, whether it's that we, you know, include it as part of the notice, or I don't know what other option there is, but I think that probably would help. I did have a question from someone about a current candidate for Board of Education, so, and to me, I don't see that as much of a conflict as school board, and so I would rather limit it just to school board. Chief General Counsel, are you thinking or do you have a?
I'm thinking. You know, the employee one is simple because that's law, it's the ethics law, 281A prohibits, there's an opinion right on point that prohibits employees from being trustees. I'm not sure you can hold somebody's right to run for office against them without some type of, I would just suggest, instead of making that a, I think, I think at least two trustees have made their intent clear tonight, instead of making that a specific qualification so that we don't run into legal issues, I would just suggest that, just, that one concerns me a little bit. I can't, unless you can give us some reasonable basis for why you don't, you have to explain more, I think. We need to create a record. And it's not like somebody's going to sue over this, by the time they did, it would be over anyway. So if you want to put it in there, we can put it in there. I'm just a little concerned about it. Because, and let me explain what I'm getting at, is everyone has the right, as long as you're not a felon, and even some felons, you can do it, as long as you're an electorate of the area, as long as you, and in this case, live in the area, you have the right to run for office. It's pretty much just a right, just go fill out the form and, and now you're going to hold that against the person to qualify when the law only says you need two things to qualify, and those two things are residency and the ability to be 18 or older. I just have a real concern that that's going to be a cutoff point. Now, you get to consider that when you make your vote. I don't want to change the election or something of that nature. That's my trouble. 280, the trustee and the employee situation is completely different because an employee, the Ethics Commission has said in multiple opinions, an employee cannot sit in a position where they, they can, he or she may take a vote on something that might benefit them. So therefore you can't, and there's literally an opinion right on point for school board trustees and teachers, that a teacher cannot be a school board trustee in their own county, that we actually have school board trustees in other counties who work as teachers in other counties. That's okay. So I'm a little hesitant on that, but it's ultimately your call and I can defend it as long as, I think I can come up with good reasons.
Trustee Cottle.
Yeah, I was just going to give some reasons, but it sounds like you're advising us to stay away from that, so I'm good with that. And honestly, assuming that the two candidates for District G live in District A, the most we would have is three. And I don't think they do. So it's not like we would create a huge list of applicants for that issue. So I think we're good, probably just to leave it alone and just make our decision individually at that time. If that's, you know, it sounds like that's what you're advising us to do.
I think it's cleaner, but if you give me reasons and you guys want to vote on it, that's fine. I can, I can make the arguments. So your call.
Trustee Simon Holland.
I'm just thinking that we're going to get inundated with emails and that sort of thing. It would be nice to be able to solve this ahead of time. Is there a way we can say, in order to, to respect the vote of the voters of District A, we would not, maybe we could say, hell, I don't, I don't know, preference will be given to candidates who are not running for, I don't know how you would say it, or current candidates for District A, the Wausau County School Board are discouraged? I don't know how we could say it without, I mean, it's really, the voters need to have that opportunity in November and have it be untainted by our, our discussion and our appointment process.
Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think that just based upon the advice of counsel, and I know you had defended it vigorously one way or the other, if needed, I'm fine with every individual, I agree that the voters should decide in November, you know, however, if individual trustees want to do, that's going to be in my mind because I do think that's fair, that if that creates a legal problem for us, I'm fine with saying that, those are things that are important to me as I make my decision. So I can go either way. I'd love to be able to say not because then it doesn't waste people's time, right? And I am certainly concerned about that, but, you know, I certainly want to be above board legally and we're, everyone's being, you know, people are being open about what they think, and we consider those things that we think are important.
I, if I may, I just, I worry that, is it different if, when we're doing the ranking of our folks, if somebody says, well, I, this is what happened to me, well, I wasn't going to, I wasn't ever going to appoint anybody that was a candidate running for the position? You know, if, if we know that, I think it's fair for people to know ahead of time, but I'll go with, you know, whatever the guidance is. I just think it was, it wasn't handled very well in our case, but we just have to be, we just have to be honest about that. And if you're going to say it at the, at the appointment process, why not say it ahead of time? That's all I'm saying. But I hear your concern, Neil.
Yeah, I would just suggest the one, the difference between the two is you're disqualifying somebody. It's, this is qualifications and you're saying you're disqualified. Whereas in this case, you're not saying you're disqualified, you're saying, I'll consider you, but I want you to know, for me, as a voter, as a trustee, I'm not selecting you because I don't want to taint the vote in November. And that's different. So you're, you're not saying to the person, you're not qualified, you're just saying, this is what I think is important when I vote, and that's why I'm not going to vote for you. I would also suggest that, I think you've all made it pretty clear, and anybody who's running for A, if they're not watching this, or, excuse me, going to apply, they're probably watching this, so I can't imagine they would go through the effort.
RG, yeah.
So, well, we're pointing for District A, right?
So. G and A are the two, are not the only two, but.
Oh.
They overlap geographically, so I don't know where the candidates live, but it's possible.
Well, there's some of Jackie's and some of mine also overlap, so.
Right, right, right. Because you have the at-large.
And some of mine overlap too, with you, but not with.
No, but not with A.
But not with A, right.
Yeah.
So, but if you, if you want it on there, I can put it on there. I just needed to get the language together because I have to get to this newspaper by noon tomorrow.
I, I'm fine with just making note of the employee part and then I feel like the record, you know, is clear tonight, at least from my perspective, how I feel personally, if any other trustees wanted to make known how they feel personally before we move on, that's fine, but we actually, at a recent Nevada Association of School Board Members meeting, talked about the possible change to NRS to change qualifications, and it got, it was a big legal conversation about how that, and so I was a little concerned about the word qualification. It would take some wordsmithing, like trustee Simon was, Holland was saying that we're, you know, it's not so much a disqualification as a discouragement or something else, but like I said, I think I'm good moving forward with the motion. else, but like I said, I think I'm good moving forward with the motion just to use the NRS qualifications and the note of the information about employees. If anyone else has anything to add at this time? Is there anyone who wants to make that motion?
This is a motion around qualifications?
Yes. We'd be using the NRS.
Madam President, I move that the qualifications to fill the vacancy in District A be as stated in NRS 386-270 with an emphasis on, emphasis on any employee of the district not being able to apply. Did I get that right, counsel?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Vice President Taylor, second by trustee Cottle. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously.
And Madam President?
Yes.
So Neil, you'll be able to wordsmith that, that it couldn't be, a current employee can't serve?
Yeah.
An employee could apply.
Apply, that's true, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right, yeah. That's exactly how I have it right here.
Yeah, okay.
I have, you can't serve as both trustee and, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So we're just giving, yes, I got it. So we're just giving them notice, if you apply, this is your, yeah. Number three, decide on application process. So the President would like this to focus in on two possible options. These are her thoughts. Option A, a letter of intent which addresses two to three questions and a resume, or B, a letter of intent, a resume, and answers four to five questions. She recommends, and I agree with her, the option A, which is two to three, a letter of intent which answers two or three questions and a resume. Frankly, we just don't have time to create a formal application and get it, like, you know, with the boxes and everything, so this seems to be a professional way of handling it. The suggested three questions were the three questions that we had used in the past in the notice. If we use these three questions, I just need to know, because again, I have to write and finish the notice tomorrow morning and get it to the newspaper, and they are, question one, why are you interested in serving on the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees? What experience, inter, no, question two, what experience, interest, training, or other skills do you feel you would bring to the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees? Question three, what is the role of a Washoe County School District trustee? And those were her thoughts. I guess if we wanted to do a different format with four to five questions, we'd have to come up with those. Those might be the three you want to use. Keep in mind, we're only giving the folks a week to get this done, so, or I would suggest you keep that in mind. Then that's the next decision point on what, and again, those are from the President, and that's what she was hoping for. If you have different ideas, obviously, you're, you can't make a decision unless you do so as a Board of Trustees, so.
And I apologize, I thought that I didn't ever get, I think, the previous list of questions to anyone to post with the agenda, so I can share those. I pulled the three questions from the most recent appointment of a trustee, Ryan Gonda, and it was, at that time, the process was, and I think it was for the previous ones, a letter of intent, a resume, and four, five questions being answered. The other questions that I didn't include in my list of three were what, so the other two questions were, what do you feel are the major challenges facing public education in Washoe County, and what do you believe are Washoe County School District's strengths and weaknesses, and how do you believe WCSD could be improved? Those two, to me, didn't seem as applicable at this time and for a truncated period, but the other three I felt were still applicable, and I don't really have a strong preference if they're answered separately on, you know, as three questions, or if they're included into the letter of intent, but it seemed just to reduce paper and work if they were all combined in the letter. So that was my thoughts on that, but I'm open to other.
And I think I copied as part of your support material, the notice for Mr. Gonda's appointment, which contained those questions. Did that not make it on the support material? If it didn't, that's my fault, not JJ's. I thought I sent it over, though, so I apologize if it didn't make it. I think we were working on writing them, and I might have sent over a more complete version on accident, so my mistake. Thank you for covering that, President Raymond.
Trustee Simon Holland?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we use the first option that you suggested, which was the three questions to be requested as part of a letter of intent, and those three questions were great.
Motion by trustee Simon Holland, second by Vice President Taylor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we touched upon this question four a little bit, and how to narrow down the candidate pool, and there's any number of ways to do this. The only issue for us legally is that we have to get these names on the agenda. So what the intent will be, back to trustee Taylor's question, is there'll be two agenda items. Agenda item one will list out, here are the 10 applicants, to keep with our example, A, B, C, all the way through. Then number two will also have all 10, but the first one will clearly indicate only so many are going to be interviewed, and then the second one will say, this is the interview process, right? So, and I'll handle the agenda titles, I'm not so much worried about that. We just need to figure out, or you all need to figure out how you want to narrow it down. The suggestion from President Raymond was that each trustee will list their top five during the September 22 meeting, and the top three candidates with the most votes will be interviewed. So it'd be similar to how the naming committee does their selection of names. What they'll do is they'll have 10 names on a board, and they'll rank them, and they'll give particular numbers, and then the ones that get the highest votes come to you all for you to decide, the three highest. So that was kind of her thoughts. We'd have the 10, again, if my example's 10, 10 names up there, you all vote, and whoever falls out as the top three candidates get interviewed. Now, I know trustee Taylor, Vice President Taylor, sorry, has some other ideas, and that's great, too. We just, however we want to do it, but the thoughts are that we need to narrow it, because if we do get too many applicants, you know, we got to tell people upfront, you're not all going to get interviewed. That's the point.
Vice President Taylor?
Madam President, I would just, I would just amend that to say approximately three, and then that gives us a little leeway, one way or the other, based upon where the votes are, and, and again, we don't, we don't drag in someone if they're unnecessarily competitive, and if we have, you know, two really close people, that we feel strongly about moving forward, we're able to do that as well.
Thank you. I agree. And there is a rubric that we can get to everyone from the previous times that actually has a way to score the applicants and the resume when you're reading them, so that you can have that completed beforehand for each application. That just would be the, you know, a ranking based on their resume, a ranking for how they answered each of the three questions, and then, you know, if you could tally that up, if that's helpful, you wouldn't have to use that. And I think it would just be important that the five, if we did this method, that the top five be ranked when you arrive, not just, these were my top five. And if you don't have five, if you only had three, that they're ranked, or whatever your ranking would be. Vice President Taylor?
Just one question, then I'm prepared for a motion, if you're ready. The question, so in ranking our top five, then will they get a certain amount of points based upon where we rank them? Is that the idea behind that?
Yes, and the zoning committee, I think you get, it's based on the number of votes, so that would be fine. So if you, you know, the top, the candidates with the top three numbers of votes, but I'd be open to, if their staff had other suggestions, that they came to the meeting that day with that.
So it's kind of counterintuitive, but it'll make sense. So in zoning, if you're number, you get three picks, and your number one pick gets a three, then number two get picked, gets a two, and your lowest pick gets a one. So this way, whoever gets the highest number wins, right? It's not golf, it's like normal.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you. Good memory.
Thank you, that's what I meant. So it would be five through one, basically.
Yeah, five, four.
Five through one. And I'm prepared to make a motion, Madam President.
Okay.
Unless there're.
I don't see any, no.
Okay. Madam President, I move that the board, the board comes prepared to rank all of the applicants according to the rubric that we're giving, and rank the, rank all the, rank the top five of the applicants according to the rubric that we're giving, and from there, approximately three move forward to be finalists.
Motion by Vice President Taylor, second by trustee Minneto. Any questions? Yes, trustee Cottle?
Just make a friendly on that, if it's okay, Dr. Taylor, to say, rank a maximum of five?
That's friendly enough.
All right, so the motion is amended and accepted by the, okay, great, by trustee Minneto. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and the last big question of the night is, decide on the process for interviewing the top candidates. President Raymond's recommendation, which I'm here and I support, is that we, my recommendation would be that each of the top three candidates get time, three minutes or so, three to five, to make a statement, and each of the six trustees get to ask a question. I suggest that we have a list of questions that we use for the previous appointees, which I'm, I did forward that, that got there, okay. And I suppose a trustee can propose a new question, and that's, there's just some other notes on here to me, but basically, that would be the process. So that's how we've done it in the past. I know, I remember when trustee Simon Holland had applied for the previous one, and I think she'll tell you, they asked the, each trustee asked a question, and I don't know if it was the same for you, Vice President Taylor. It does make for a long interview process, but, you know, it's one, it's a tough situation. This is a very important thing. This is a trustee, it's an elected position. At the same time, it's five meetings, so it's, I know I probably feel like I'm rushing you guys, but I don't know what else to do, so. So that's the thoughts.
And I just was looking at the previous process, and then thinking to, just as it related to our recent superintendent appointment about each of us asking a question, but I actually don't think that that is critical, as long as we all feel comfortable that the right questions are being answered. I don't know that we need to make up six different questions if we can't, but if we know that the, you know, it's important for each of us to have the opportunity to ask a question. So this decision point kind of almost has two parts, that we would be deciding on the time that the three, or up to three top candidates would have to make a statement, whether that's three, four, or five minutes, more or less, and then, but we do first need to talk about the interview questions. I had one that I, I'm not very good at writing these types of questions, but I was trying to come up with something to target more about what the candidate kind of hoped to accomplish during this short tenure, you know, as a way to kind of better understand what their goals would be in their service as an appointed trustee. Vice President Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. To my recollection, I don't think we discuss these, typically discuss these questions in advance.
We did discuss that, sorry, Chief General Counsel and I emailed a little bit back and forth about that, that by discussing this and making the decision today, the candidates will know the interview questions in advance, but we, I don't know what the other option is.
If I remember correctly, when I was a candidate, as well as the two previous, we did not provide the questions in advance. There were questions that we submitted in, I don't know if we sent them to legal counsel or to Chief of Staff or someone.
That's true.
Because, frankly, I'm not prepared to share a question right now, and that would mean we have to do it right now, and I'd rather be a little bit more thoughtful, and I don't, I don't know the advantage of giving the, of doing it right now. There may be one, certainly, but.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, and I should have mentioned that, is, in the past, how it was done is the trustees were able to submit a question to, to the Chief of Staff, who worked with the General Counsel's Office and HR, to make sure the questions were legal and appropriate. Obviously, you can't have race, age, those type of questions. And so each trustee would submit a question, and that would be the question that they were permitted to ask.
And that they were not duplicative.
I'm sorry?
And that they were not a duplicate.
And then we would also, that's right.
That Ellen and I didn't ask the same question or something.
And we would also check to see if they were duplicates. You're correct on that, to make sure that they weren't the same.
I'm more comfortable with the process such as that, we have a time when we submit them to whomever may would be appropriate, and then we can all be thoughtful about the question, and then we can make sure that there aren't duplicates, if someone reach out, and we handle it that way, and that we have a chance to, like, this is, it's only a few meetings, but it doesn't take that much
Yeah.
To get things off track, so I'd rather be, give it a little bit more thought.
Okay.
That is how we've done in the past, and I think the reason why we brought it to you today this way was we weren't sure if we were going to, how we were going to do it, so that's why, you know, so however, again, however you decide to do it is fine. I could vet them and make sure with Emily that they're, and I'll have our labor lawyer do it, and make sure that they're appropriate and legal, and we'll look for duplicates, and we can do that.
Okay.
If that's what the board desires.
Trustee Cottle?
Thank you, Madam President. Would it be appropriate to put a time limit on the responses to our questions?
Yes.
So, because if we did three minutes of response, then we know that this is going to move along, because there's a maximum amount of time between the statement and the responses for each question, and I personally wouldn't take it personal if I didn't ask a question of everybody. I think we might get what we want out of our, out of each candidate if they each got three questions. I don't think we need six.
Okay.
That's just me. Between the statement, the three questions, we're already going to have their resume, their statement, and their other statement, the written statement, three questions at three minutes apiece or something, we'll get this moving along pretty good. That's my recommendation.
So maybe if we pick a deadline for when a trustee would submit a possible question, interview question, and then would it be appropriate, then, that you and I, Neil, work on, if there are more than three or less than three, how to narrow that down or expand it?
If the board wants to give us that authority, that's fine.
Okay.
If that's the motion, that's.
Or it could be the, could, is it possible it could be the board leadership team, the
Sure.
Clerk, Vice President, and I, that.
No.
Okay.
Do you mean you three decide what questions to be asked?
Yeah.
No, because then you'd be a subcommittee.
Okay, okay.
So the board would have to give you the authority, working with staff. We have to have some discretion, obviously, in case somebody asks an inappropriate question. Not that I think you guys would, but obviously, I have to have, I always have to think of the worst, sorry. That's just the train.
And we don't need to post those questions in advance, so there's a little more time on that one.
There are definitely more time on that one. We have no, there's no rule on us posting it in advance, and in fact, I think we could, you know, surprise, here they are, and have them taped to the, you know, table when the candidate walks in type thing.
Okay. So maybe if you have a recommendation, my suggestion might be that you submit it by next Tuesday, the 15th, that would give us enough time.
I would, I would appreciate that, just give us time to. I would, I would appreciate that, just give us time to look at it.
So before that, before the 15th?
Even to close the business, I think I, we can make.
Okay. For the opening statement, and I appreciate Trustee Cottle, I think, three questions, and I think a time limit of three minutes per question is probably good to me, I, and then, but maybe an opening statement that's no more than five minutes. So I would be looking for a motion that, sorry, go ahead.
Do they get a closing statement as well?
I don't know. I don't know that they would need one.
It's okay, just asking. It's a short interview, so that's, they don't have that, sure.
Trustee Cottle.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
And then Chief General Counsel, so all of this into one motion, is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, I'll give it, I'll give it a shot. I move that the Board of Trustees conduct the finalist interview, interviews in the following way. Each finalist will have a maximum five-minute opening statement. Each finalist will be asked three questions by members of the Board of Trustees, and with a permitted response time of three minutes per question. Does that cover everything, Chief General Counsel?
Do we need to mention that trustees could submit a question?
Oh, and then, the trustees should submit possible questions to the Board President and Chief General Counsel no later than 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, September 15.
I would just ask that you give the President discretion to decide the three questions to be asked, because I, I just think it's better form.
And then direct the, or give permission, the Board of Trustees gives permission to the Board President to select the three questions after vetting by the Chief General Counsel.
That was our motion. Do I have a second?
Oh, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I wondered. Second by Vice President Taylor, I apologize. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
So those were the five topics that the President and I had, I'm not sure if there are others that trustees have, but this agenda item was drafted so that you guys can decide on the application process, and although I'd like to think I'm not fallible, I probably am, so I might have missed something, and I know President Raymond's not, so I'll take the heat for it. Did we miss anything on this that you'd like to see happen?
Trustee Cottle.
I just wanted to make the comment, I know, President Raymond, you have the discretion in making the agenda. If the intent is to seat this person at the meeting, I would recommend these, this item be as far in the front as possible, so that any major decisions after that, this person is seated and a voting member of the board.
Vice President Taylor.
Excuse me, I may also add that this may be, depending upon the agenda, this may be a time to start earlier, if necessary, so that we can allow the time for the interviews and whatnot, maybe it's a noon start or something. We usually start at two, no, we start at four, so maybe it's a two o'clock start, or something like that, just to allow the time to do that, and then still have, you know, meetings and agendas have been pretty full, so.
Just want to, I guess we'll defer to Superintendent on that, it's a school day, are we able to start at that time with, I'm assuming McQueen is still being session?
Is that McQueen, right?
It's at McQueen. Two o'clock? Probably not. Three o'clock?
Just to investigate if that's an option, that we can start a little earlier.
Okay, yeah.
The other thing I may suggest is, we know that people begin to send recommendations and so on like that, maybe there's an email they can send it to, so it can be collected and made public, and, and we can have a chance to, to grab that and review this part of their package.
Good suggestions. Trustee Cottle.
I guess I'll, for Chief General Counsel, so this can be investigated after this meeting, are we able to take action, giving the Board President discretion to change the meeting time for September 22 as a part of this item?
Yeah, no, you don't have to.
Okay.
I know that you have the rule that our regular meetings start at four, but I think you've indicated here that without a vote, I don't think a vote's necessary, because still, by board policy, she gets to call the board together when it's necessary, and if she deems it's necessary to call the board together early because of the size of the agenda, I think she has that authority. I don't want to disrespect the vote of the board ever, and I know that our standard start time is four o'clock, but if she looks at it and says, I don't want to be there until 2:00 a.m., I want to start at two, she gets to do that. I mean, that's within the, that's every single public body in the state, so I don't think it motions necessary.
Okay, that works, so then the district can pursue start times, pan on McQueen's schedule, and then go from there.
All right, any further? Thank you all, that was very efficiently done, I appreciate the time. Okay, 5.01, board reports. Anybody? Nope. Superintendent report, 5.02.
Just super quick, I'm excited that State Superintendent Ebert's going to join me on three school visits on the 10th, so looking forward to that, visiting Huntsberger, Mersey Hers, and Galena High School on the 10th.
Wonderful. 6.01, future agenda. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we were all very moved by some of the concerns reported by teachers today, and I know Superintendent McNeil is putting together a sort of an after-action report, and I would just like to make sure that, that report covers what we're doing to address some of the teacher concerns, and I'll just list some of the ones I heard about. The concerns about the inequity that some teachers are having to do the triple duty of an A and B hybrid schedule, plus distance learning and exclusions, that that's, not everybody has that responsibility, but it's very, very tough on some. The high numbers of students that are assigned to some teachers, and I know you're aware of that and working on it, just a concern of how that's going to work with overages. Questions about, some schools have specials and some don't, and how we can just make sure we're balancing that. Those questions about the Wi-Fi hotspot limits, and I know Dr. Turner was going to respond to that individual that had the questions, but I just would like to, again, have that so we report on the public record, because we've had it brought to us on the public record. Technical issues with Teams, we did hear and heard in emails as well, from teachers who are delivering content from schools, and they're getting bumped off Teams, and there are technical issues. Zoom meetings and Teams are, are dropping, so I just wanted to have some of those be part of your after-action report, if we could. And any others that, you know, came up tonight, that just want to make sure they know on the public record, you know, how, how much we care about that, all of us do.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. 6.02 is public comment.
We received emails from Julie Hitchcock, Amanda Schlattner, Heather Cameron, Michael Spitzer, Adrian Lowry, Kalen Dodge, Debbie DeCalagoro, Chris Denowitz, Sarah Zober, Sherry Green, Lindsay Anderson, and Lydia DeFloro.
All right, thank you, as always, JJ, for helping to corral in person and email public comments and make it all come together. 6.03, next meeting will be Tuesday, September 22, 2020. Time may be updated, and it will be, take place in the Robert McQueen High School Theater. I will now adjourn the meeting.